Okay, we are recording. And we are live, just waiting for our room to populate.
So welcoming everybody to the planning board meeting for January 19th, 2002. As we do with all these remote meetings, I will begin with a roll call. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Delio.
Here.
Bob Cowp.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Here.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
Don Walters.
Here.
Bonnie Sontag here. We also have Linda Guthrie, our note taker. And Andy Port, Director of Planning. So our agenda tonight is the continued hearing. For Turnpike redevelopment at 166, 168 Route 1. For an application for smart growth plan approval. We have a new application that also requires a public hearing. For 1721 State Street, and this is under the DOD special permit. Our other business includes a, an ANR Plan Certificate of Vote for 57 Low Street. And approval of minutes. And any other updates that anybody has. So we will get going with. Linda, you're, you're not muted.
Sorry.
We love to hear you working, but I don't think you want us to. Thanks. We'll get going with 166, 168 Route 1. We left it that the plans would be reconciled and any issues left over for discussion. I want to open it up to the applicant to respond first. And then we'll pick up bits and pieces as we go along. We will also review. Waivers, findings, and proposed conditions. All of these are draft. And open for discussion. But once we've reviewed all of them at this meeting, we can decide. What will happen at the next meeting, as in whether we think we're ready to take a vote or not. So let's consider this as much as possible, a final review, nailing down anything. That the applicant or we or the planning office feels needs to be nailed down at this point. I'll turn it over to the applicant to kick us off, please.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is Joe Circovich from Arrow Street Architects. Thank you for having us tonight. I think we want to start off tonight by reviewing some updates to the, the traffic studies that Scott Thornton from our consultant Van Ness. Has put together. So Mr. Port, if you could switch to the, the traffic consultant. Report, which I think you have a copy of.
Sure thing. I happen to know, it doesn't look like we have Scott Cameron with us. Do you happen to know if he's joining us this evening, or perhaps he's joined another name in the audience?
Yeah, Scott Cameron will be joining us a little bit later, but there is a representative of his here present Eric Brown, I believe, is on board as well.
Okay.
But Scott Thornton should be on, on the line.
Okay. Scott, do you want to speak to, I have the, if I'm not mistaken, I have the deceleration lane rendering, but we also have the two Parker Street and Hill intersection renderings. Did you want to show those?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Thank you, Andy. So, and I guess in terms of, of this concept, I think this was, this was generally, we presented this the last time, I think this was generally. Well received by the board. I've been. Looking, I've been in contact with DOT to try to get a little more than a, than an endorsement. Of the concept, but I did, I do believe that your office has received some confirmation or endorsement of this concept. So. So I think that that's, that's a positive sign. We, we are, we are looking for, we are expecting. This concept hasn't changed from what we presented previously, and we do expect that there'll be some modification of the guardrail that's there. In order to accommodate the widening of the shoulder, but again, this is all, these are all details that we expect to work out with. With DOT on the permitting of the, of the project. I think the next, yeah, so the next slide, the next two slides are a couple of options that we worked on. Following the input that we received from the planning board. And in general, you know, what we're, what we heard was that the striping alone was not. Likely to be a deterrent and, and not likely to be something that motorists would, would adhere to. So we have a couple of options. One is, is to add a rumble strip. Along the, the outside edge of, of the curb of the striped radius. And this, the, the rumble strip would be a 16 inch wide about. Three quarter or half an inch depression carved into the pavement. The idea with this is that it's an audible and tactile. Device, feedback device gets people's attention similar to some of the, the center line or the, or the shoulder markings that are present on, on highways. And this type of design would not be so, so loud. As to, as to get a lot of attention or, or create a nuisance issue, but it would still present. Some type of feedback for drivers of vehicles, of passenger vehicles to let them know that they're driving where they shouldn't be. And with the, the, the reason that we want to maintain that radius is that. We want to, you know, we want to provide enough, enough pavement for large tractor trailers to be able to, to make that turn across the, the white portion of the, of the striped. Striped island there. So that's, that's one option. And then the next option is something that's a little more structural. And what we had designed here was a. A raised island in the, in the center island of the Hill and Parker Street intersection. That would be a standard raised median island. Six inch reveal, but then the area on the inside of the curve would be a shorter three inch reveal curve. And what that would do is allow tractor trailers to, to cross over the island. And, and it would also discourage passenger vehicles from, from crossing over because the tractor trailers or other large trucks can cross over or can, can mount that island. With it, with a short reveal with a three inch curb, whereas passenger vehicles, you know, some of the larger SUVs can get over it, but at speed. It's, it's not going to be a pleasant experience and. We had, we have proposed some stamped concrete. As a way to. You know, again, create more of a, of a visual buffer and also. Present something that's, that's highly maintainable. We thought that this, this design would be something that snowplows could, could mount. With the wing plow and, and push that snow off to the side. So it would be able to be easily maintained this time of year. We did present these to, to Department of Public Services and, and the city engineer who had some concerns. I want to point out that, you know, these were, these were conceptual options that were really presented. As in response to the feedback we received from the planning board. And, and not intended to be design drawings. So there's, there's a number of details that would need to be worked out. Drainage being one of them. Actual sizing for, for the radius. To allow the tractor trailers to get through would need to be further, further designed and further reviewed. But these were, these were intended to be conceptual drawings. So, but that said, we did get some feedback from, from the city engineer. Who. I think provided those comments to, to the planning, planning department. And so in addition, so there's, there's these two options. And then there's the potential for an option three, which would be. Something that he proposed, which included. A grass, you know, remove this, the pavement through there and add a sort of extend that curve. To a grass section. So where, where it's shown to be stamped concrete, it would just be grass. And what that would do is it would create, it would basically remove a lot of the impervious area that, that's there. And allow drainage to occur just across the, you know, of, of a planted surface. And I think that the. You know, the, so, so of these three options. You know, I think we can, we can continue to, or we can come up with a, with a plan or with an option. That, that meets the concerns of the city engineer and also the concerns of the planning board in order to, to address the issues of, of speeding around this. This curve and, and calm the traffic as it's coming off of Route 1 and off of Hill Street before they turn onto Parker Street. So I think that's, that's where we're at with the, with the traffic concepts. And I can either answer questions or turn it over to Bob Ulich to go over some of the, some of the other issues related to the. To the coordination updates in the civil plans.
I think it might be easier if we have a discussion of the traffic. Solutions that you've talked about. I think the deceleration lane, unless people have any questions, is probably pretty straightforward, but I won't keep it out of the discussion. But I think the main focus right now should be on the options here and. If anybody has any concerns or questions to help. Influence one choice or another, be a good time now to raise your hand as Don has done, and then I'll call on the others in order.
Thank you, Bonnie. A question regarding safety. I, I understand it did speak to. The Department of Public Service and I believe I can understand why they perhaps. You know, for option number two, in my opinion. I think option number two is the safest. And I was wondering, have you or will you also talk to public safety, i.e. our police? Because being on that road many times is probably most of us in planning board have. You do tend to accelerate there. It's not only an issue with, with folks crossing the rail trail, although I'll mention something later. It's not obviously many people cross the rail trail unless using the commuter rail. Typically turn around there, but more importantly, are the people exiting the. The proposed development there, sticking out their nose, those cars are coming around. So I could see this potential for some form of automobile collision. I'll leave it at that, Bonnie, right now. Thank you.
Okay, I don't know who was next. I'll randomly call on Bob. Sorry.
Okay. You know, I, I think the second solution is, is pretty interesting in terms of defining the traffic flow. I was. Interested in the, in the third option as well, which is grass, but wonder if, if grass or turf would. Would stand up to truck turning traffic. And there, there are products out there. Kind of generically called grasscrete, which, which is a kind of structured surface, which allows grass to grow through it. That, that might. Support truck traffic a little more effectively than, than just a turf area. So that might be worth thinking about if, if that was a, a concept that, that was viewed favorably. But, but anyway, I think, I think the second concept works pretty well also.
Thank you. Rick?
Yes, I'll go in, in support of the second option two as well. The option three, using the grass. I do have concerns about maintenance and not just the, the structural support for the trucks, but also how it's going to look and who's going to, who would maintain the, the grass. So I think that the, the stamped concrete with a three inch curb and some of the modifications that John Eric. Mentioned in his email would be the way I, I'd recommend going on this. I think it's important to note that this is part of a larger problem, which is, is there's a wide curve. At this end, and there's also a wide curve at the Route 1 Hill Street end. So it, the whole street operates almost as a, a single U-turn facility. And so this, this solves part of it. Ultimately, I think we're going to have to solve the, the Hill Street Route 1 corner, but that's perhaps beyond the, beyond this project. So I would recommend going with option two. With any revisions that could be approved by the city engineer.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. I just have a question on, also I support option two, which is basically what we're looking at with some variations. I'm wondering if. There are any serious drainage issues that would be helped. Are mitigated, I guess, with pervious pavers.
Yeah, so. So right, so there, there may be, you know, right now, this is, this is all open drainage through here. So. So drainage is something that would be looked at in, in more detail in the design phase. Pervious pavers would in fact absorb a lot of the, a lot of the runoff from this, this type of, of. Island or, or hard surface island material. So that is something else that, that could be considered.
Okay. Chair Sontag, this is Andy Port. Could I chime in there?
Sure.
Having worked with the Department of Public Services, my sense is that they would have concern about unit pavers, but to your point, if perhaps the stamped concrete could be done with a permeable pavement. Or, or concrete material that would perhaps address your concern without raising concern for public services, which tends to not like individual unit pavers that can have different rates of rising and settling, thereby creating issues.
Yeah, I just, you just reminded me, the, the resistance has always been about clearing snow. So that when you, when the designers look into that, that should be a question. But if they can take care of the runoff and the drainage issues. Through more traditional methods, that's fine. I just sort of threw it out there as an option to add. All right, we're closing in on the end of the review process here. So we need. Something, might I say, concrete to incorporate into the plans before we take a vote. So I would anticipate that all the parties that need to talk about this and pull out their. Their engineering and drawing skills to do so before the next meeting, because this is too important to leave as a. Conceptual plan at this level without some more fine tuning. So let's put that on the to-do list for the next meeting, please. Any other comments before we move on to landscaping?
Chair Sontag, if I could chime in again, Sandy?
Yep.
If so, Scott, if you and Scott Cameron could confer with John Eric White, the city engineer, I think to, to Chair Sontag's point. It would be preferable that this plan incorporate whatever stormwater management adjustments or any other adjustments to say the tapering of this area, that all that be incorporated in a final plan that would be referenced by the board in its approval. So rather than leaving those silent and saying that we would coordinate with public services. I think the hope here is that you would coordinate with John Eric White and provide specificity on the plan here for any adjustments like that.
Yeah, absolutely. And that, and that's, you know, that's something that we can, we can work out with him to, to address, address his concerns to his satisfaction.
Good. Okay, let's move on to Bob Ulich then.
Bob, did you want to start with the landscape sheet? He might be muted.
I don't even see him.
Oh.
All right, I think I'm on now. Thank you.
Oh, you're, you're OSLC Topsfield?
Geez, that's because I. Never mind, that's my other alias, right?
We can't hear you.
You cannot hear me?
Go for it.
Okay.
Now I can.
Okay, all right, I'll try to be more bright. Can you go, Andy, can you go to the landscape plan? Just the black and white version, please?
Oh, sure. There's your black and white.
All right, perfect. So I'm going to run through just a, a lot of these are refinements and coordination with. With civil engineering plans. So I'm going to focus kind of north and work my way south on the plan. So just in the upper left-hand corner there, we've done some coordination about making sure the landscape plan concurs with civil as it relates to this curb line. Change to accommodate the deceleration lines, deceleration lane. And then we've incorporated, again, notes clarifying. Protection of existing trees to remain along that, along the edge there. We did identify and, you know, I talked with Jordy about the need to do some limbing of some trees in order to increase visibility along that while maintaining those trees. So we've identified that. Then at the other end, kind of if you pan way left there, Andy, just for a second, because we've kind of got the match line that goes off the sheet. So it goes off to the far right. I think it's upper right. Yeah, so that's the stretch that goes off and shows the rest of the sheet. And so we've, again, coordinated, I think, with civil about clarifying. What is removed and only selectively removing invasive species in that area that's within the property line, but beyond the parking lot. And overseeding with native seed mix again to kind of get as much native plantings to take there, but remove some of the invasives that are in that area. And then going back to the other end, also, one of the comments was about the layout of the, kind of the fieldstone walls that. Are supporting the parking lot as retaining and then protecting to the greatest extent possible, the root zones for the existing trees to remain, which are in gray. And we've modified those so that they're not right up against the trees and they're offset as, as much as we can to provide as much root zone protection as possible. And moving further south, right at the, at the connector. We've actually enhanced, you know, the, the point in which each of the CCRT or Clipper City Rail Trail connections occur with the site. By introducing pavers across the, across the rail trail as previously discussed. And then at the north connection, we've located a bike, a bike rack adjacent to the trail there as discussed. As, you know, thinking that people from the rail trail may be the ones, or some of the ones that are visiting the commercial retail building and gives them a convenient place to park their bike. While they're enjoying the picnic tables and the, and the high top benches and so forth to either side of that structure. Then on, as we discussed, on the Route 1 side of the building, wrapping kind of from the commercial retail building around kind of all in the back of sidewalk. We had some discussions about protecting both visual buffer and physical buffer of residents from traffic along Route 1. And so we've extended the. Fieldstone wall along the entire sidewalk and just down beyond the entryway at that midpoint. To a point where we felt like, you know, it was going to be, it was, it was, well, we couldn't extend it further because there, there's required to be a, a pull-off area for emergency vehicles. And then beyond that, it got to be too much of a pinch point. So we thought that that was pretty successful, the extent to which we showed that, and then it addressed some of the issues that we discussed. Then we worked on the grading such that we're able to salvage a couple of evergreens that were just south of the northern connector with the Clipper City Rail Trail. Again, can see those evergreens that are existing on, more on the city's property just south of that northerly connection. Yeah, just to the, just below the hand there, there's a evergreen, and then there's another one over closer to the circle. Then you may recall that. Along the entire length of the property line, we've kind of rethought the strategy by putting in a continuous under drain. Drainage line with periodic drain inlets along the property line in order to reduce the swale, you know, the kind of accentuated swale drainage swale that's there. To make a better experience both through the rail trail and for the property, you know, so that, that grading is more continuous. There's a slight dip there, but not as pronounced as it is currently. And so that's provided for a more continuous kind of landscape feel. And if you pan more to the southerly connection, if you would. I wanted to highlight, you know, the improvements to the connection from the southerly connection across where the main pickup drop-off areas where we've designated the pedestrian and shared use. Kind of travel area outside of the, the vehicle travel lane. So it's identified as a kind of a concentric ring beyond the ring that is the vehicular travel area. And then highlighting that we broke down the, the pickup drop-off area with. Kind of similar to what was shown on Parker Street there and Hill Street, a little bit of a raised curve with pavers to distinguish from the, the. Two minutes traveling around the outside and then a, a lower planted area at the center of it again to kind of break down the scale of the turnaround area. And as you kind of go from the connect, from this turnaround area towards Hill Street, I just wanted to point out there were some questions about. The improvements here, but we wanted to reinforce that the chain link fence along that entire property line where it chose the limit of work has been removed and shown in the drawing here. And we're showing a continuous planting strip. We've adjusted the, the walkway there. So previously it was right up against the chain link fence. So we've introduced even be it modest. Continuous planting strip between the walkway there and. And the property line. And then this also shows there was some question about is the utility pole that was. Adjacent to where Haley's is, is that removed along with the overhead lines? And as you can see here, there's no, you know, that's been removed from the, from the plan shown here. And then. I think in addition to that, there was some clarification about maintenance for responsibilities for the city. The city is going to continue to maintain the lawn areas once they're planted and established, and the developer is going to maintain the plantings. So we added a note that is just below, I think, what you can see there, Andy. Just slightly below that. Late note number five. So we indicated that note and we added notes that clarified. The notion that the, that the. Team is gonna, or the developer is going to maintain those two planting areas that are to either side of the gateway. Entry gateway. And I think that, oh, in addition, we also, there was some discussion about us just clarifying the number of trees on the property on, as part of the planting plan. And if you go to the top of the plant list, we had just distinguished out how many trees total, just the other, you go, so. There's like 105 trees total and we distinguish it as, you know, 24 deciduous shade trees, which are larger in scale. 72 ornamental scaled trees, which are more modest in scale, and then nine evergreen trees, so a total of 105. Of which they would be composed of those various species in the plant list below. And I think that covers everything on this plan. And the, essentially the other supplementary plans, the lighting plan is the same. The planting details and the other associated details are the same as you have previously seen them. And then we upgraded the illustrative plan to convey those elements that I just reviewed with you.
Great, that has a lot of, the deep, has a lot more detail and it looks. Like the kind of plan we wanted to see. Thank you. But still, there might be some questions or comments, so I want to open it up for board comments. Rick?
Thanks. So how high is the fieldstone wall on the Route 1 side?
It's probably about two to two and a half feet.
Okay, thanks. So my main concern here is. The. The interruption of the rail trail by the, the brick pavers. I know you had talked about doing some type of paver, or maybe it's a brick paver, but some type of pavers. In those curved areas that are the existing openings to the connections, the existing opening to Haley's, obviously, and the, and the new one. But I don't think it's a very good idea at all to.
But I don't think it's a very good idea at all to interrupt the rail trail, the way you're showing it here, making a complete circle. I think it's a safety issue because I think it makes that look like it's a plaza that people could sort of stand on and 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 group, you know, talk and you'd be not be unaware of people coming by. I also think it's the there's there's no other place in the city on the whole rail trail system where we do anything like this. It's kind of makes it different than everything else. And I I just don't think that's a good idea. So I would advocate for making that a semi circle of pavers rather than a circle. I I just don't, I I think it would be unsafe. I think you'd have to stripe it to stripe across the paving to make it safer. And I just don't think that would look good. So so that's that's my main concern. And then the other question that I have is it's kind of a there's a difference between what you're showing on this rendering and on the black and white plan. If you go to the black and white plan, the and and zoom in on that existing connection, the Haley's connection. This is something I've raised in the past and it's not hasn't been clear to me, but it looks to me like you're getting rid of part of the alchemical garden on the south side of the entry there where the spiral herb garden are and some other things and turning that into grass. And my my guess is that you're trying to open up a view to the project to get rid of the vegetate, the the vertical vegetation and make it all lawn. But I I would, first of all, I'd like to have it called out that you're taking that out if that's if that's your intent and and second of all, get your thoughts on why you're doing that because right now there's stuff on both sides of the path and and you're getting rid of, you know, the stuff on the north side, but not the stuff on this on the south side.
Sure. So the area that we that we were focused on preserving was the area that is outlined just to the north of the circle. In the the the, I think there's three and they may be beach plum that are around the outside of the circle. They're in kind of rough shape in the process of regrading to put in the drainage. There's a place in which this kind of transitions in that zone between the site and this kind of seating node or or niche where it becomes what I'll refer to as ratty. And so there's kind of an area where we kind of gracefully get a trim up to that alchemical garden. And then the idea was that we were regressing up to that. I think, you know, if it's desired that we replant, you know, similar plants around the perimeter of that circle, we could do that. But it's going to be hard to keep those, given that we're going to reconstruct that circle, reconstruct the path across and then are doing drainage in that whole area. It's going to be, you know, that whole area is going to be disturbed as well as as we fill in the swale in that area. So that's just kind of the perspective on how we got to where we are and how we've gotten kind of to the limited work that we're showing.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm talking about is is a little bit to the a little bit above the L two circle there. So there's a yeah, right about where that hand is, there's some existing parts of the alchemical garden that and just, you know, just to be clear that you're turning your is is the intent to turn that into lawn and to and to open up the view to the building?
Yes, I mean, it wasn't, it was more because there's grading going on in that area. So it's going to be modified as associated with getting with doing the grading in order to kind of minimize the swale in that area. So we would replant it. Our understanding was that more of that area was where the storage was kind of for the maintenance of the alchemical garden, but the alchemical garden itself was more north of the of the connector.
I think the I think the storage is more to the north, the north of the of the fruit trees, but rather than to south. Anyway, I guess my main concern again is is just the interruption of the of the of the rail trail. And I would, I would strongly recommend that we preserve the the rail trail as it is and keep the pavers. If you're going to put pavers in, keep them in the plaza area there where the seating is.
Fair enough. I mean, yeah, I think our perspective was that it may be a benefit for getting people to slow down as they kind of come to what is what is an intersection, but I can understand your perspective as well.
So the outcome of that conversation is there going to be any change to the plan here? I'm having a little trouble sorting it out.
I'm sorry, this is Andy. Unfortunately, Jordy Divining is not with us, nor is Liz Reed from the Parks Department, but my sense is that Rick Tainter is correct here that from the city's perspective, it would probably make more sense to keep the asphalt there and such as such would just be a half circle on a revised plan here.
And that's fine. We can do that if that's the preferred direction.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Alden.
Yeah, I was just going to reinforce that. I think it's not a good idea to interrupt the paved surface of the trail. That. So I would just second that concern. Thanks.
Okay. Don, sorry.
That's okay. Question to the most recent speaker or perhaps someone else on the design team, I on if you look at the very south easterly end of the property, you have a transformer. And if you've seen the size of the transformers on one Boston Way and soon three Boston Way, you've done a great job of landscaping, making things look nice and assuming we ever figure a way to get from Hill Street to 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 this sidewalk area here, the first thing you see is that transformer. Did the design team have any considerations placed that anywhere else? I and I understand you may have limited flexibility dealing with national grid, but I I think one could surely bury that anywhere on on the the feeder lines to it into the transformer and then bring it back to the building. It's not a big issue, but just walk someday to in a wastewater treatment facility and you see all the, you know, diesel tanks and diesel generators there, et cetera, in the transformer. So I just wanted to know, has there been any design considerations to that to that aspect of the project, please?
This is Bob Yuley. And I apologize if I didn't introduce myself properly at the beginning of the presentation. I know that, you know, one of our challenges is where to place it such that it wouldn't be to the detriment of those other spaces, you know, and so the other places it it needed to be where it was going to be readily accessible for service and so forth. So along the kind of route run stretch was was the most logical location. In other locations, it's it's not as really accessible for vehicles for maintenance and it would potentially impinge upon kind of the the successful programming of kind of the the open spaces that are closer to the turnaround or to the main entrance and so forth. So in our evaluation of of sites, I think that's how we came to the to the conclusion that it should be where it is. And we still showing that cross hatching, we couldn't put a stone wall on that side closest to Hill Street, unfortunately, in order to maintain access, but we still are thinking that we're going to plant that corner to screen from that side while providing access from the from the room one side.
Thank you, Bob. Anything else on landscaping or related issues on that? So we'll move on to anything else the applicant team wants to follow up with us on?
We can, this is Joe Circo, which we can just go through some of the architectural updates that are being coordinated with the landscape as well. If you go to the basement for plan, Andy, I just wanted to. Yep, that's, there was a comment, this is Joe Circovich from Arrow Street. There was a comment made a few weeks ago about clearances and the turning radius as you come down the ramp, we wanted to make sure that we've addressed that properly. So we made sure that we had a 24 foot wide drive lane there with a four foot radius turning onto each one of those parking areas to the right and the left. So I wanted to show that we've done our due diligence to to address that. And go to the first floor plan now. And no updates here really, other than the landscape that has happened underneath it, we've tried to clear up the area around the turnaround at the entrance to the lobby a little bit, make it a lot more pedestrian friendly, as Bob already pointed out. And show the connections to the sidewalk on the route one side. Also, all the screening elements that are happening along the one side with the with the low wall and the landscape. I think those were all the updates on this plan. We could probably skip all the way down to the first rendering. Oh, I just wanted to mention that nothing has changed really with the exterior elevations and the materials that we're planning to use there. So here's the first update showing the connection to the rail trail. Again, this is showing a circle. It's going to be changed as we understand it now to a semi circle. We also removed the bike rack that was shown here in the previous rendition that's moved now up to the northerly connection near the retail area. So those are the updates here. Just showing a little bit more open space at the turnaround. I think that grass in the center should be eliminated. That's actually hard paving that we have in there. So that's a mistake on my part. Those are the all the updates. This update is showing the utility poles that are actually located on one, which will remain in place there. And then further down, you can see some of the landscaping and screening that's happening along the northerly building.
Joe?
Yes.
This is Bob again. Sorry, just to clarify, you weren't incorrect relative to that image back there. There is the intent that we have planting in the center and paving is around it. So
Oh, is that true? Okay, I thought I heard you say that.
It's intended to be lawn. We do have planting at the center.
Okay.
It was around it with a raised edge, the reason also with the where the asphalt meets the unit papers.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, Bob. I thought I made a mistake there. And then this view again, showing the utility poles as they occur currently and the low two to two and a half foot wall and the landscaping and buffer there in front of the north building has been added here. And then here the circular connection, which will update and as soon as we get a chance to to show the semi circle on the CCRT connection on this side. And the same updates on on this rendering at the the rail trail side. So those were all the updates to the the architectural renderings.
Okay, while we're here, I'm raising my hand. I'm wondering if we should have bike racks at every exit connection to the rail trail, not just at the northern one, but at the lower one as well. And even coming off of Route One, any place that anybody could land on the property with a bicycle, it seems to me there ought to be bike racks. And I don't think they are, or I may have missed it. Could you clarify?
We could go back to the site plan to see where exactly we've shown them. I think we're showing them primarily on the northern connection, Bob.
Yes, yeah, those are there. It's and and the locations were per discussions that we had with Jordy Vining about where he thought they should be and where they weren't necessary. And I think, you know, in the discussions that we had, he thought that the ones at the kind of southern crossing weren't necessary, that that would be more resident related and that he could see it more at the commercial retail building. So just to kind of give you background on the discussion.
I mean, I'm not a bicyclist, so I would like to hear from anybody on the board who thinks that we can't have too many or we could have too many bicycle racks. And I know Rick's hand is going to go up before it even went up. Go ahead, go for it, Rick, just on this one detail, but it could be important.
Yeah, I I guess I don't think that there needs to be bicycle racks at the southern entrance to the property. But I do think there should be bicycle racks near the front door. And I I can't remember, I know, I know that somewhere in the plans, there is a list of the the number of bicycle racks bicycle bicycle parking spaces to show that it complies with our our zoning ordinance for the Smart Growth District. But I don't know whether those are actual outdoor bike parking spaces or whether they're only long term storage. So again, I don't think from the rail trail point of view, you need to have any bike racks at the southern entrance to the site. But there probably should be some in the area of the drop off area by the live work spaces by the front door, that that kind of area. Just just so that there's they're available for short term visitors and so forth.
Joe, can you follow up with that and make sure they're in there?
Yes, we'll add those at the near the front door in the live work area.
Great, thank you. Okay, related to the building and its configuration. Anybody want to jump in? Yeah, Bob, go for it.
Lots of really good work that that has been done and and has been presented. And I I think this is a good image to to talk about for for just a few minutes. The last few meetings, we've we've talked a lot about the goals of the Smart Growth District, particularly goals relative to mixed use. And, you know, I I've talked a lot about about the retail component. There there are really only so many pieces that you have to work with here. There's the live work units. There is a retail program. And and I would add to that, there is the the potential for interface with with the pedestrian environment that exists around the project. And if you if you look at the project as as we have in the past, the Route One frontage really is is an automobile oriented environment. And despite the fact that Mass DOT would like a sidewalk along there, it's really not a very friendly pedestrian environment. The frontage along Ashby Cross, the 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 property to to the south doesn't offer a lot in terms of of activity or or interface with with the property. What what you have to work with is the rail trail. That's that's where the people are, to where the pedestrians are. It's the umbilical that that connects this project to the commuter rail station to the other residential properties across the street. It's really where your front door needs to be and and this side of the project that we are looking at in this image is is really where all the emphasis needs to be in terms of of the kind of mixed use potential for the project. So, you know, I I've gone back through over the long weekend, went back through all of the plans that have been presented. And and again, there's 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 a lot of good work that that has been presented across the several meetings that we have talked about this. But I I still feel like I'm looking at a project that is fundamentally a residential project and and doesn't at the ground plane feel like a mixed use environment. So I want to propose something just for discussion tonight, but I I want to look at this as as additive to what you have presented tonight with with a change that that puts puts a a ground plane emphasis on on a public space and on a mixed use environment that I think really could, you know, tie this whole building together in terms of the overall smart smart growth district. So, Andy, if you could put the the sketch up that so having having and let me to to the design team, let me apologize first for my blue beam skills which which are pretty rudimentary, but but I I wanted to first with with that red arrow emphasize the rail trail and the pedestrian environment. And, you know, if if you look at the first scheme that that the design team presented, you had, you had a swimming pool and and you had activity along the zone, which I have labeled as public space here. And it it occurred to me that that that's the place where you really can connect with visually with the rail trail and potentially physically to the rail trail. And it occurred to me And it occurred to me that that that's the place, if if that is visible and connected to the rail trail, that's the place where live work units could be. It's the place where retail works because it's now connected to a kind of public space that includes live work, that includes activity in the public space. You guys have mentioned farmers market, you have mentioned selling Christmas trees at Christmas time. There could be other pop up uses in a space like this, if there there is enough room to accommodate all of that. And this, if you think about the experience of moving down the rail trail to the south towards the train station, this this could become the kind of gateway to the Smart Growth District. And it could be a public space that could be shared by pedestrians in the rail trail occupants of the building. The retail is activated, the live work now has visibility and connection to other uses. And, you know, if mixed use is all about synergy of uses, concentrating everything in this way creates those kinds of synergies using the very limited kit of parts that you have to work with. If I'm parking in the north parking lot, my my route into the building that is through this public space and past retail and past the live work units. And again, concentrating all of that activity in in one kind of mixed use environment. What this requires is that you go back to your original proposal and put the garage ramp on what I think is the weakest side of the project, which is the frontage next to the the Ashby Cross property. And if you do that, you you create an enormous opportunity to connect this project to the rail trail, to the broader environment. And I think it starts then to meet the mixed use objectives of the city. I think you've you've got a terrific building that you've put together. I think the civil and the landscape concepts are are there and and they can kind of support this as an overlay to everything you've done. But I do think that the ramp where you have it located now in your current proposal really cuts off this potential and cuts off the visual connection to the rail trail, even though it's sloping down, even though, you know, it it disappears below grade. You know, it it does prevent this kind of thing from happening. And I I would ask the design team, and I would like to open this up to discussion with with the board as well. Ask the design team to consider moving the ramp so that you open up this potential to create a true public mixed use environment. So I'll I'll turn it back over to discussion from there.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Are there any board members that want to react to this first? Then I'll ask the design team to weigh in.
Thank you for those comments, Bob. Those are really good points in reference to the ramp. As you know, we did have that ramp there at one time in one of the previous schemes and one of the comments from the board was that that was a a difficult turn to make once you came down and had to make that sharp U turn back into the building. And based on those comments, partially, we ended up moving the ramp to its its current location. So I think the place we have it now is 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 a pretty good spot, but we did, as you know, look at that blue ramp location previously.
I think the the not to interrupt, Joe, but I think I think the reality is it the 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 configuration is very similar to what you have right now. And, you know, obviously, ideally, you know, the the solution that's across the street, which is coming into a long venue or building like this at the end and moving into parking is 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 the easiest way to do it, but you don't have that option on this site. So it's it's going to be a sort of less than than obvious way into parking to begin with. But I don't think the geometry of of the ramp on on where the blue arrow is would be significantly different than the geometry on the other side. And, you know, I was the one that raised the question when you first presented it. But, you know, I I think it's it can be similar to what you have right now. And, you know, not not as direct as the parking configuration on on the other projects across the street. But given the limited access and and the way this will be used, I think probably adequate. So I think I I think the benefits of doing that are 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 worth taking very seriously because, you know, this kind of public interface and the city's goals relative to mixed use and really creating an environment where this is connected to a to a broader district. I think those are worth considering very seriously and and not let it be be driven by by the the ramp to the park. There's too much potential here to to just not not think about this kind of connection.
Rick.
It's really interesting. You know, one of the problems with this that we have come up with every time we look at it is the building is just so big relative to the site is is, you know, squeezing so much into it. When we did have the ramp on the right hand side, we were told that we couldn't get the eight foot wide pathway through there. It wasn't just the interior turnaround, it was the the amount of space we had available to get into the into the building. I think the building was actually a bit longer at that point on the on the right side. So that was a problem. So you know, I I understand I would love to have this be integrated into the community. Right now it's 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 an island. And it's, you know, there are a couple of places where you can walk into it, but there's no direct way to integrate into the rest of the community. A different a different approach that I had before Bob spoke was I really wanted to make sure that live work spaces facing the the turnaround were truly designed as commercial spaces that could be for an interim period used residentially. And one of the points that I was going to make was that if they I would rather have them designed designated as live work or commercial rather than designated as live work. Because ultimately, I think what this building needs is some commercial space that's more than a a lawyer or an accountant working out of their apartment. And so, you know, I don't I don't have the answer to it. But I can see both sides and I I would be I I hate to make these people chase chase the chase different opinions as we go around because we did. We did try to get to the point where we get the driveway away from that southern end of the building. And that's why it's where it is now. So it's it's possible that you could leave, it seems to me it's possible you could leave the the garage entrance where it is and have the live work spaces on that side and design the space appropriately, because a lot of that stuff, I think, is a grade. I was trying to trying to look at at the grading plan and so forth to see whether that is all a greater, it seems to be. So it seems you could have, you could, you could do both in a way, you could open up that to a more public use and keep the ramp where it is. But again, I don't I don't think we want it. I think we have to be careful about, you know, telling them one thing at one meeting and coming back at another meeting and and telling them to redesign the thing again. It's a struggle with this with this site because it's so it is so that, you know, I'll I'll say it, there's too much building for the site. But but we're 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 trying to make it work.
This is Bob Uli, if I could just chime in. I mean, I think, you know, the one thing is we we have modified the building we've and I think it's to the benefit of the civic open space. We did have the configuration, the garage in that location. And as I understand it, you know, the site has evolved through discussion that we've had with the board. And that discussion in has included making the site more permeable. And that permeability has taken the form of, you know, access at the north and south points at the north point to access to the commercial retail and an invitation to the site and the south, you know, celebrating pretty much this connection to Hill Street and beyond. And so the idea that, you know, in the other scheme, when we had the garage ramp where it was shown, that garage ramps presence didn't just didn't just kind of affect the, you know, that the garage ramp being up against the Hill Street connection. It basically, you know, paid for no civic open space along that whole stretch. In in the trade off of moving the garage ramp to where we currently have it, it's allowed for the for essentially that Hill Street connection to sponsor a series of open spaces that relate to that live work space so that it's not just, you know, the unit spilling out there, but there's also civic space out there. And that's all, you know, building on the energy of the entry to the building. So we've got the space over closer to Hill Street that basically is sponsored by that connection. And then the the area of the courtyard that's kind of under the blue arrow now and and those areas wouldn't be as viable and as sociable as as they are if they didn't have that. And so I feel like we've really put our energy into making sure that the south end of the building and its visibility and its connection to the rail trail have been optimized, you know, via this this approach. And it would be, I feel it would be compromised if you put the ramp back there. And I think then, you know, I see the the indication of the public space in the middle of the building, but I feel like that's it's the furthest away from where the connections currently are for that to be as viable as as possible. So I think we've maximized the areas of viability and circulation, you know, in the areas that are currently shown.
Okay, I'd like to bring in another voice, Bob. Let's have Don speak to this first.
Yeah, Bonnie, what I was going to say, and and I I think Bob may be wanting to say some form of rebuttal. So what I, if I may, Bonnie, I'd like to defer, or as I say, in Congress yield to Bob, because I think this was Bob's baby, so to speak. And and I'll I'd like to summarize my thoughts after. Bob, you've kind of exhausted all your points on this, please.
Go for it.
Thanks, Don. I mean, we're when when we're talking about the the kinds of of program elements that we have. I mean, one of one of the concerns that I that I have expressed in the last couple of meetings and it's focused on the location of retail is, you know, it it's it's hard to create a mixed use environment when when live work units are at one end of the building, retail is at the other end of the building and pedestrians are coming in and out in in the middle. And, you know, we talked the last meeting about how I if I were a resident, how I might get certain places on the site. That that to me, you know, the the best way to put these pieces together in a way that feels like mixed use is is to to connect them. So so that you have a concentration of of these program elements that are the non residential elements that that really give this project its unique qualities. And and if you think of the rail trail as a street, you know, obviously no cars on it, but if you think of it as having the character of a street, you you would want these uses to front on that street because that's where your visibility could be. That's where your cafe seating could be outside of the coffee shop or the ice cream shop. That's where you have visibility to the live work units. And and it creates that kind of legitimate relationship of those elements to the pedestrians. I I don't argue about the benefits of of the 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 small paved area as as you move up to the Hill Street intersection. I I think that's that's a benefit to the project. But but the whole transition along that property line is is not visible to the general public particularly. And, you know, isn't isn't the greatest view down into that parking lot. So I mean, maybe there's a way of working this ramp in a way that that creates more of a space where where that diagram was showing it. But but I really think the connection to the rail trail and creating visibility and transparency and an opportunity for the kinds of activities that the applicants have talked about. You know, the farmer's market, et cetera, these kinds of things that would support a retail environment, they need space to happen. And, you know, I don't see any of that space in the plan unless you try to create it in a place that's easy to get to by the broader public. So, you know, there's a there's a lot of good stuff that has been presented tonight in terms of the character of the landscape environment. I think this this can be a terrific project. But I think you've we really have to give emphasis to these mixed use components if the city feels strongly about the Smart Growth Guidelines that have been established. So, you know, I'm 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 just trying to reinforce those pieces in the in the project. So Don, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Don.
Thanks. Okay. Several things. I I probably believe that the Smart Growth provides guidelines. And right now, I believe the most critical point for the city to continue to develop in a smart way is for increased housing and specifically affordable housing. And so if with respect to the building, you know, we could have more flexibility for smaller, I for one is very comfortable with this size. I we all have to make choices. And I think the planning board and in particular, the design team did a good job of trying to understand our requests. We all have different opinions and myself right now, I I think it's it it's probably a good compromise. Nothing is perfect. I find it interesting, and I do agree that some of the visibility of this building is is not as obvious. And and I, if I'm not mistaken, I think some of the tree planting, which I think somewhat shields this building from the Clipper City Rail Trail was was requested by the city and Jordy and others. So perhaps some of this is our own doing. And I do think that the design team, and again, you don't have a whole lot of options, you know, with respect to the to the green roof. There's I think there's only one other green roof in Newburyport. And granted, it's it's small, but nonetheless, it it provides a little bit more level area that one could perhaps do some of this, these program functions that Bob has mentioned. So I just want to throw out some of my initial thoughts on that. Thank you.
I'm Alden.
Yeah, I yeah, I just would have concerns if the ramp is located next to the connector over to the Hill Street crossing that 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 would be very crowded and really close off that that part. I understand. Yeah, the concept and all, but I just think that would close that that whole area in a lot more. So I'd have concerns about that. And and again, just the whole whole idea with the tree buffer there. I'm not sure how open that area they would be to without without more clearing there. So I just would have some concerns with that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Rick, you wanted to comment again?
This is actually more of a question. I I was, I've been trying to figure out about the green roof over the parking garage there. And so it appears to be it appears to be pretty much at grade with the adjoining lawn area or or the area that is just to the between it and the rail trail seems to be looking at the grading plan that green roof seems to be at about thirty four and the terraces are at thirty four point six. So it seems to be a pretty much flat area. So my question is, what is many of the green roofs I've seen are are on roofs of buildings and are not usable. Is this a usable open space? Or is this an area that people have to stay on? Will it be grass or will it be some kind of seedum or something else?
It it's more than likely going to be a type of seedum. We don't want people walking around on that sloped area. So it won't be a usable roof. It's really just to cover the parking ramp so that the residents, when they're looking down on that area, see green instead of see the ramp.
So I don't mean the area on top of the ramp. I mean, the area on top of the garage that is right adjacent to those five terraces.
Oh, I see.
That's it. That's labeled on this on the site plan as a green roof over the garage.
That area, that area has got enough depth, Rick, that that could be, that can be planted.
That area, that area has got enough depth, Rick, that that could be, that can be planted as lawn.
So they can be long. Okay, great. So that that actually could become. More of a usable open space area. I did, I I understood that the ramp wasn't usable open space, but that area could be. It could become more or less indistinguishable from other lawn areas.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm playing with an idea of how we. Because I, how we integrate more the live workspace and the retail with the residential. Without re- a major reconfiguration. And I'm just wondering if it would make sense to. Move the right now, I believe all of the live work is off of the south building. To move it to the other side closer to the retail and somehow develop that area. So that retail commercial, um, business and live work. And if we decide to add to that commercial option, um, are in one area. And, um, either through signage or some other kind of creative landscaping to make that. Just a more accessible area and stick with this design. Because I do believe that we could be setting up the separate building. Retail for failure, and I worry about that a lot, um, looking at this design. Because it is so isolated. I know we've heard from Inco that you could easily walk up there, get your coffee before you go to the train station if you live in the building. I don't think people are really gonna walk the wrong, the other direction to then go back again. And they can probably get a coffee down at Metzies before they get on the train. Um, so just for one example. So that's the concept, that piece of of. Bob Calp's recommendation. I'd like to see if there's some way the design team can somehow. Bring that a little more vibrantly together. Beth?
Um, yeah, I see that Scott Cameron for the applicant has raised his hand. I'm not sure if he could answer any of the questions that you've raised or pointed to.
Well, let's get all the the planning board comments out there so that they can all respond to them as a whole. Because if we go back and forth on each idea, um, it may not be as synergistic, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay, so let's hear from Beth and Rick, and then we'll move back to the design team.
Yeah, um, so Bonnie, just a follow up on your comment. I agree. I I know at this stage it's hard to completely reconfigure things and that the space is limited. But I do wonder if part of the issue with that side of the building is the lack of connectivity. And I'm wondering if, you know, creating some pathways, maybe putting more public open space. Behind the retail area and connecting it to. You know, that plaza area near the front door. And that would provide some access if the live work slash. Commercial retail units eventually. Turned over from residential that having a pathway on that side of the building as well. Might allow an easier transition in the future. And I didn't know if even one more pathway onto the bike path there, it may be too much, but. Um, just to sort of open up access to that area. Might help in sort of merging the retail and the residential.
Okay, any other ideas from the planning board before I send it back to the design team? Okay. Um, whoever on the design team wants to speak up, please get us started with your views.
Hi, um, Bonnie, I'm not, can you hear me?
Yes, Lou.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. It's it's Lou Minicucci. Uh, I had been raising my hand and I wasn't sure if I was, if you had seen it or not.
I had seen it, Lou. I'm sorry to not acknowledge because we were still in discussion with the planning board.
Yep, no problem. Um, I. When we first discussed the project and putting the ramp to the south side. Um, and it was kind of requested that that turn wasn't going to be, uh, you know, adequate. Uh, it made me think a lot about the future growth of this overall. District and what I'm in negotiations with the Ashby Cross individual who owns that. Building, which was the former. I don't D A V, I believe it was, but the the building that you can see with the brown roof. And having moved the building to its new location, I thought was. Really a better access and more convenient for the tenants, but it also would be able to create a much better situation. If I were able to, or even if I was not able to acquire that and somebody else. Uh, we're gonna develop this in the smart growth district. I would suspect that they would do something similar to to housing. I think that would. Create a better opportunity for an expansion. Um, my concern, so that was, I see the benefit of moving that ramp. Uh, I see a couple of benefits to that. The the other thing about retail, uh, you know, I think Don mentioned that, you know, one of the key components, I think of the smart growth district. Is to create housing and and actually we're gonna, if this were to be approved. We would have created two hundred and fifty two units of 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 housing that will count towards your affordability component. That's a really big dent, I think, into fulfilling your housing goals. Uh, not to mention the fact that twenty five percent of those are affordable. I don't think you can build enough housing fast enough. To address the 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 critical housing needs of the community. I see that demand for housing far outstripping the need for retail. I I think I mentioned this before. I've done a lot of retail. I've I've developed stop and shop, C V S's. Branch banks, Dunkin' Donuts, uh, and I I know a fair amount about the retail industry. That industry is really shrinking. And if if something were to be successful here on a big scale, and if you look at Haley's. Ice cream, they honestly have not done well over the last cou- um, couple of years, even prior to the pandemic. I actually don't charge the guy any rent and he's barely making it as it is. He's had to close some days because he's he's done like twenty five dollars for the entire day. So the retail habits of people are changing. I, nothing worse. Um, than not having retail is having empty retail. And I see that if I can have a small components of of retail. I could somewhat justify financially doing that. I think overloading the site with a lot of retail, it would not support it. My hopes is that the the Newburyport Crossing, the two hundred and fifty two total units will support. The retail that currently exists, the two breweries that are in. In the Newburyport Industrial Park, one of which is right across the way. And Pomodori's and the and the and the businesses around the circle and people just. Um, supporting the downtown restaurants and. Other retail that already exists. I know that when we first looked at our site. The Metzies that the station, the train station was vacant for about eight to eight years prior to that. The M B T A was almost willing to give me the 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 building for nothing if I could put some retail or something in there. And this area is kind of a no man's land until we create a neighborhood and we create some mass and we create some density. And so I feel that I understand where the board is going, but I don't think I'm going to be able to accomplish it. On this site. But I think we can accomplish and begin to fulfill the housing needs of the community with this project. Um, one of the things that as we were talking that that Bonnie, that you mentioned that I think. Is a possibility is to maybe relocate the live work units so they. They face north, so at that corner of the building. That's behind the retail building, we could potentially put the at the end caps, two of the end caps. That would kind of orientate more towards the parking lot. So we'd have that retail building and maybe the two live work on the corners on each of the first floor corners and then. Look at the re- uh, look at the live work on the uh, the balance of that northerly section facing the rail trail.
Just to confirm, how many live work units are there planned?
We have two in the in the plan right now, ground floor near the entry area.
Yeah, that's what I thought I saw. So they could be moved. I wasn't even thinking at the very end, as Lou mentioned, but just along, you know, facing the rail trail. Uh, but at that end, to make it more of a. Somewhat commercial hub, you know.
Yeah, Joe, is that possible? I I I know I spoke without conferring with you to see about the physical feasibility, but could you envision? Orientating two of the units at the end towards the retail building?
Yeah, that's absolutely possible. You know, one of the things with the live work units, I think that we have to consider is that they do need. Uh, parking, so.
And there is parking there.
Yeah, there's parking there. We could make a connection to them. You could also get to the sidewalk on the on the route one side easily. Uh, that's a three bedroom unit in that triangular corner, but there's a two bedroom unit on the, just on either side of it that could easily be converted to a live work unit.
I I actually can see those four units at the end all converted to to live work. I mean, our live work units are very popular. People do, they don't necessarily, but with COVID, it's really hard to understand. A lot of people. Understand whether or not people will have people coming in um, to their offices, but I know a lot of. Uh, of our tenants are working out of their home and really like the live work units. So so Joe, a- as I'm looking at this plan right now, you have those two little patios that face the commercial building right now. Are those patios or is?
Those are beds to the parking area below, but the the patios are the white spaces.
Right, so you could reorientate, you could, we could reorientate those patios. Uh, to the other side and create a walkway.
Absolutely. Get them closer to the commercial area.
And speaking of a walkway to what, um, I think was a Beth was saying to somehow make this more connect, this end of the building. More connected to the central part of the building and the south side. What can you do in that respect?
So we did take a look at putting another walkway along. On our property, but we just felt that it was a bit too much to have uh, two parallel walkways, one the Clipper City Rail Trail. And then this other one. So we thought that anyone who wanted to get from one end of the building to the other could use that rail trail and. It's more of a social thing. It's not that far to walk, uh, if you wanted to get get around from one end to the other.
Do you think it needs any kind of signage to encourage people to? Um, move from the south to the north and to get to the retail? Or I'll leave it with you to think about that. Because we don't want it, you know, just hanging out there. Um, and I think that was part of what was driving the bigger. Concept that Bob came up with.
See, Bonnie, I I. I frankly think that people within the building will walk down the spine of the building to that. Uh, northerly section facing uh, Turnpike Street, that door and walk out that door to the retail. So anybody on the fourth floor would just come down in the elevator. Stop at the first floor lobby, walk down the interior of the hallway in the winter in bad weather, when it rains or just. Even in in good weather, I guess, and they'd walk out that side door. And uh, go to the retail and then possibly. Once they did that, if they were gonna make a connection to the rail to the train, then walk down the to the rail trail. Or frankly, I see a lot of the people who would grab a coffee there and just walk the rail rail trail for either walk their dog or. Uh, exercise, taking a a walk on a on a nice day.
Okay, that's clear. Uh, Bob, you want to come back for?
Yeah, just, just. Just wondering if if live work did move to the end of the building. I mean, part of what I think is a challenge and and. You know, the 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 tree line at the edge of the rail trail. Really starts to become an issue if you're trying to connect the rail trail. Visually to to the building. So I'm I'm wondering if that could be opened up a little bit more. Uh, so so that those live work units, you know, have a direct line to to the rail trail, sight line to the rail trail. Uh, maybe there's a little bit more of a paved environment there. And I I wonder also. If if the corridor that was just mentioned internally, whether it could run straight out to. To that retail building. You know, open up at the end wall of the building rather than turn and go out to Route One and and come around. Would it be possible between two live work units to extend that corridor out? So you have a direct. Kind of visual connection out out to this retail and live work space. Uh, just trying to make as much out of that as as we can.
Yeah, good point. Bob, you like, you want to respond?
Sure, I. I guess I'm just, I'm responding in the context of kind of a progression and the progression as it's. As it's, you know, as the project has moved along is that there's certain places that are meant to be public open spaces. And there's certain places where there's meant to be a bit more privacy and the dialogue that we've gotten as we've progressed along this project. It, you know, we've come to understand that there's the ends of the building is where the public open spaces would be. And that there's this certain area that, again, evolved from feedback that we got from the city. That it didn't, the whole building didn't want to be fully open. And first, it started out that we didn't want even see the building from the rail trail. And so then we've started to make it more permeable by these connections at the south and the north. But at the same time, we didn't want every portion of the building to be open and publicly accessible. And so this idea, you know, in the area between. The south and the north is that you'd use this tree line along the rail trail to give a buffer between the building. Both from a scaling perspective and from a privacy perspective, such that some of those units would have some privacy. While having the ends having more open and more civic. So I just wanted to kind of remind that there's been a progression along here. If we're gonna rethink that progression. It's somewhat upsetting the apple cart and kind of how we've gotten to where we've gotten relative to, you know, how we make a dynamic. Series of open spaces that are both responsive to the idea of live work and responsive to kind of commercial retail demands. I would also say that, you know, some of the discussion on this, on the north end has been that we've got the commercial retail building. There was a desire to separate that from the building. So we took now, we've got it said that there's, you know, there's separation that there's a rain garden on that backside. So. This kind of, you know, going back and rethinking is going to require us to rejigger this idea of, okay, now. The, you know, that end of the building uh, has a different attitude as it relates to the commercial retail, which may require us to have to. You know, rotate the building around or something because, you know, there's kind of a front and back to the building. So. In order to have work, live work on that end, relate to that commercial building, you know, there's. It just requires rethinking and I'm and I'm sensing that, you know, the direction that we've kind of gone down and the refinements that we've made have led, have been based upon a progression of discussion. That we've had. So just wanted to point that out.
This is, you know, this is still preliminary design. And, you know, I think what we're talking about here is, you know, again, trying trying to make the most out of a limited kit of parts here. And, you know, if if the dialogue is about making live work. Work in conjunction with retail at the north end of the project, then then, you know, things like trees. Uh, things like public space, uh, are are not complicated things to adjust to accommodate all of that. I mean, in the end, you want all of this to work. So, you know, I I I think it's not asking a lot to to take a look at the site plan around these elements. Uh, to create what I think the design team would agree was proper visibility and and proper exterior pedestrian environment around these uses.
Rick, would you like to jump in?
Yeah, I think that, um, there's, there's a lot of good ideas that have been coming out and. Yeah, I think that there's there's a lot of good ideas that have been coming out and. The if you if you were to move the live work units to the north end of the building as as Lou had had talked about. I could see the rain garden becoming a. Rather than moving it, I can see it becoming kind of a unifying feature between the different parts of the non residential. Components almost being a a central, not not quite a water feature, but getting close to that. And I I'm seeing that the trees that separate the. The rain garden from the property line, that seems to be the the narrowest piece of of landscaping. It looks like the narrowest piece of landscaping on the site plan. So it seems like you could actually open that up and. Make a make a visual connection right there to peek in to see the the commercial pieces. I really like, I don't remember whose suggestion it was, but pulling the corridor, central corridor down toward the. Commercial building instead of sending people out to Route One, that could connect to that nice seating plaza. On the Turnpike side of the commercial building. So it seems like it's it doesn't seem like it's a lot of. Stuff that has to happen to make to make this happen. It seems like it's it's almost tweaking the existing site plan and and it could really. Enhance the possibility of. More active non residential use on the ground floor there right next to that commercial building.
Okay, is that it for planning board comments on this type of redesign? And Bob, you look your hand still up, but I don't think you meant to leave it there, or did you? Oh, Scott.
I will, sorry.
Okay, so design team, is there? A possibility that you could play with these ideas and to not. May may massively change your design to see if we could. Put what we've been talking about into. A viable alternative.
So we're we're talking, just so we're clear, I'd like to understand, we're talking about keeping the ramp as it is currently located. We're not going to move the ramp. And we're talking about. Putting the live work units closer to the retail area and providing some sort of exterior access to that plaza. Plaza.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could. We could definitely.
There's another, there's also another possibility. It's so funny that Lou jumped on my idea and put them at the way end at the. You know, the the end of the building. I was actually thinking of putting them on the very end of the side. Facing the rail trail. So. You know, if you run into trouble with landscaping, rain garden, whatever. That's also an alternative. They'd be the last two units. Of the building on the rail trails facing the rail trail. If you can't get them on the very tip very end. Which is probably where more people are thinking of it right now.
I Bonnie, I agree with that. I I I think the last two units on both sides. The east and the west that we could kind of look to see to make those live work units.
Uh, wait a minute. Are you saying the one facing the Turnpike and the other one facing the rail trail?
Yeah, the two, I think.
I I was thinking both on the rail trail side. I don't want to leave one hanging out there on the Turnpike side. I think they. Have a certain amount of synergy if they're next to each other.
No, yeah, I guess what I was thinking was it would there would be two at the end facing the rail trail. And then we could either have two or at least one on the other corner.
Oh, you're going to add one. That's great.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we'll look at that. I think we can definitely do that.
Just one one quick comment. Sorry to interrupt. If if we could. If if you could take the building frontage as as you move from the corner down to the end of the ramp. And and consider that the live work zone. And, you know, a space in front of that and connecting to the retail, then then you've got activity at the end of the building that that kind of takes you down to the. The limitations of of the ramp and and that slope coming up. So I'm not sure how many units that is. It may be, you know, three units across the the rail trail side of the building. And then getting to the corner, but I think that that would make that space feel. You know, like a defined space that that related to live work and and then the retail pavilion, just as a suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, I see. So so, Joe, that third unit is that it is? Would that be possible on that third unit? Because. The ramp would be underground at that point.
That third unit is a studio.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Nope. Okay.
I'll we'll let you guys work on it. We got lots of other things we want to get through tonight.
I think the the point is to try to make a kind of coherent public space around these uses at the end and then connect it to the rail trail. That's that's the goal.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. Are we ready to quickly move through any? Thing that anyone wants to highlight on the waivers and findings at this point? Because if we go through them all, we're not going to go through them in detail, but we make sure that they are going in the right direction. Then we can consider them reviewed in terms of the final decision. But we do need to look at conditions that have been very recently proposed. So I just want to.
Chair, some talk. Sorry, just a reminder to for public comment if you're going into that, if you wanted to take any prior to that.
Yeah, that's probably I was going to take it at the end, but we'll take it right now. Good point. If anyone would like to speak, please give your name and your address and speak to what you've heard tonight. Open public comment.
Tom Calder John, would you like to address the board?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Tom Calder John, sixty four Federal Street. Only one small comment. I would like to. I I guess sort of echo Rick Tinker's comments about removing that. Sort of round interruption in the rail trail. I think that would be a travesty if you interrupted the trail rail trail. My wife and I use it every day practically. It's a wonderful Newburyport resource, so. Please keep it open. I I know you're headed that way, but I just want to reinforce it. I think he made some terrific comments. It is a huge development. People are going to see this project. It's a four story project. People are going to see this from the rail trail. And many other places, no matter what happens, but. Whatever you do, just just please keep the rail trail itself uninterrupted. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Doesn't look like we have any other takers, chair. Oh, actually, we do have one other who's just raising their hand. Ron Delance. Delance, I mispronounced your last name. Ron, would you like to address the board?
Yeah, I I came here tonight thinking that I was going to have a chance to speak on the. Issue of the Fowles facade. Is that not the case?
That hearing is after this one.
Okay, so that will I'll have a chance later on.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we'll close the public hearing portion of. Public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back into the board. Rick, your hand is still up. Is that for a reason?
Yes, we there are still some issues with the civil plans that I had concerns about. I didn't leave those.
Okay, let's do that before we get into the the.
So there's just two points. The first one, I just want to make sure it's. Recognized that utility pole still exists in the driveway. Under Parker Street. It hasn't the utility plan doesn't show what's happening to it. So I want to make sure that we. That that gets solved. I'm not sure it shows in this plan, but it shows on the utility plan. There we go, right in the middle of the driveway is utility pole. And and that needs to be moved, so that has to be addressed before we vote on this project. But the other question that I had is up at the corner of Hill and Route One, there are conflicts between the drawings. This utility plan and. And the plant, the grading plan both shows the crosswalk in its current configuration. But there are other plans that show it changed to angle across. I believe if you look at the Landscape Illustrated Plan, which is L. One oh two, I think, and zoom in on that corner. Is that one? Oh, one oh two. There you go. Zoom in that corner. And you can see there they've drawn in a different angle crosswalk. And I guess so my question, I am assuming because there the 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 handicap tip down is. Right there that that is the plan to move that striping. And I'm just curious whether this has been run by Mast dot to have the edge of the crosswalk so close to the stop line. And and whether that whether the stop line will have to be moved if you move the crosswalk that close.
Scott Thornton, is that something you could answer?
Yeah. I think that this is probably just an option. I'm not sure if Scott Cameron is on. He may be able to to provide a little more detail on this. But if he's if he's not on, then.
I'm I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yep.
Good evening. Scott Cameron from the Moore and Cameron Group, sixty six Elm Street, Danvers, Massachusetts. Regarding the crosswalk, yeah, the painting would appear on the site plan, which addresses and deals with all of the. Site related matters, so walls, curbs, parking spaces, things of that nature. The utility pole, I I I do want to make clear, I did take that off of the site plan. It is not showing in the middle of the driveway. It is showing the utility plan. I cannot tell you where National Grid will want to move that pole to. I can certainly note, you know, to be relocated would be the intention, but until. A lot of things have to happen before we will get that answer out of National Grid, including, you know, final, you know, plans. A contract with the applicant and ultimately typically a large fee paid to them. Before they even start looking at it. So it it's one of these things where I hope the the board understands that. These plans have a long ways to go in polishing for construction where all these matters will be flushed out. And really have no bearing or impact on the overall design. It's just typical that goes through any any processes. We go through this. This process with you into our building permit, construction drawing phase, which would be a next step down the road. And with respect to the, I guess, the crosswalk design, yeah, what we did depict is shifting the stop line back. Putting it on a slight angle and constructing a sidewalk within the layout in the space that we have available there. To get that across, you'll get get get. Pedestrians across Route One in a similar location as where it is now. And with the real estate that we can, you know, access and and work on.
So so just to follow up on that, the my two questions. Can I assume that you will remove the utility pole from the utility? I mean, yeah, the utility pole from the utility plan so that the. The various plans match up. That's the first question. And the second question is, is this an allowable? Alignment with the proximity of the stop line to the crosswalk?
So to address the utility pole, I can add a note to be relocated final design by National Grid, because that's ultimately who's going to have the say in it. But I can certainly add that note to the plan, which will address your concern. On the crosswalk, I do have a note on the plan already that everything in the state layout is subject to Mass DOT review and approval. They will have the say. Our intent is move people across the street in this manner. If they choose to make adjustments to it during their review process. They would be entitled to do that as the jurisdiction having that authority. Maybe Scott can opine a little bit on any conversations he's had if they've been able to have those yet.
Yeah, Scott and Scott, if you could also address the push button there, there was a concern that the push button be relocated if that happens.
Yeah, so what we what we've talked about with DOT is is. Is upgrading the the push button devices. I I don't think that we've. We haven't gotten to the point where we're talking with them about exact locations for those for those items, but it is something that. They've requested that we look at and we anticipate doing that as part of the as part of the access permit process. With regard to. With regard to the stop bar and some of the other modifications shown on that last plan, I think there is. There is likely to be probably some some relocation of the stop bar to push it. A little bit further back from from the crosswalk and make sure that any any vehicle detection. Devices would still pick up vehicles that would be stopped at that location. But again, that would be. You know, it's that would be something that we would we would do should this design get advanced with DOT.
And and just to follow up, as it is right now, the the site plan says that the pedestrian crossing signal is not going to be moved. And but there's no way for somebody to get from the signal to the new crosswalk. So I assume it would have to be located. So maybe that note should be taken off the site plan.
Okay, I see Don's hand up.
Please. Buddy, continue on this point, and perhaps we could address it if you prefer in in our conditions, but I I do think. This needs to be somewhat tied down. As an example, the mass duty. May. Say, we're not going to do anything. And if that's the case, we come back to the same issue where it just ends. And I think most of us. Prefer to have something different. Developer has contacted the adjacent landowner and they may or may not grant an easement, leasehold and fee interest, et cetera. And so one of the things I'd like to say, and if this is really important to the city, to us. There always is the option, and I I understand people say will take time and money is to use the right of eminent domain to get some of this later. I'm not saying that's that obviously is a third option, but that is an option. And so if if, in fact, the other two things never never happened. I my sense is the developer would be amenable to providing certain amount of funds to the city for a certain period of time, such that if. The piece of this property was able to be obtained from the adjacent landowner. There would be funds for them to construct the remaining portion of of the sidewalk. So. I would suggest that to the extent the planning board members feel this is an important feature of of this development.
On you will see that already drafted in the conditions. To your point, so we will be looking at that in the draft conditions tonight and looking for more specific wording.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
It's already in there. Those were submitted rather late this afternoon, so I understand why you wouldn't have had a chance to look at them. Anything else on the plans that need to be clarified? Okay.
Madam Chair, this is Illumina Kuti again. I I just wanted to reiterate. Our support and concern for adequate sidewalks throughout this area. We've we've been committed to doing that. If this project were to be approved along with one in Free Boston Way. We will have constructed about two thousand linear feet of sidewalks. Between six and seven feet on average in width. So. I feel that the viability of this district, the viability of Newburyport Crossing. Is is very much dependent on sidewalks. We're we're committed to it. I think we've done a lot. I I know I drive through the industrial park. I think we're that we're really the only. Developers or the only landowners in this area who have developed sidewalks to date. So we're fully supportive of it. And this one area that I know we're going to get to later on, we're all for trying to do. To to do it as the best we can, but we have we have legal constraints. But anyway, I just wanted to. remind the board that our or state our commitment to sidewalks in general in this area.
And Lou, I want to thank you very much on behalf of the planning board because we've talked about these with other applicants and we haven't been as favorably received as we have been with you on the other two projects and this one. So from all of us to you, thank you. Because the more sidewalks that are put in by projects, the more the city sees that it need the DPS in particular sees that they need a sidewalk plan for this area and into the industrial park, and it will help us immensely in that long term plan. So thank you.
Yeah, this may be digressing just a little bit, but I we Andy and I had talked about the possibility of even a mass works grant for some additional sidewalks potentially along hillside and some other areas in the industrial park. And mass work grants, one of the bases for it is to try to encourage residential development, and they may look upon this favorably. I know we were work closely with the city in terms of getting a mass works grant for the pump station. And they saw that the ability of one and three Boston Way as as being the the beginning of the the smart growth district, starting the smart growth district. You know, that I know they advanced it a $2 million grant pro grant for that. But I could see the sidewalk initiative being one that would be beneficial for all concerned.
Chair Suntag, this is Andy. Could I weigh in for just a second?
Yes.
Relative to the diagonal crosswalk, which I think is the the main point why why this illustration was zoomed in on a moment ago. I I do feel like that issue needs to be resolved to some degree by the applicant, the applicant's traffic consultant. Whatever discussions are happening with Mast OT, there's been discussion of a deceleration lane, and that's been shown, I think, in inadequate way on the plans. But this piece right here with the inconsistency, I think that needs to be somehow clarified. The there's certainly discussion we had about the width of the sidewalk and how that's dealt with. That could perhaps be dealt with as a separate issue, but but the alignment of that, whether it's diagonal or straight, I'm not sure why that can't be clarified before the approval of this this project.
Okay. It's so noted. Okay. So to move as quickly and efficiently as possible, I'm just gonna highlight the waivers. They come off of the list that was provided by the applicant. The first one has a lot of different elements in it, dimensional and parking requirements, design standards, and so forth. They will be itemized in a table of some sort so we can see exactly what they are, rather than just having them in general terms. Number two has to do with the waiver for requirements to submit affirmative fair housing marketing and affordable housing plans. The only thing to be added to that is that they must be Department of Housing and Community Development approved documents. They are not draft documents. And three stands as it is having to do with a waiver to submit a signage plan, and there's a lot of detail in there. All at least two of those and some of yeah, parts of all three of those will be incorporated into conditions, which we'll get to in more detail in a couple of minutes. The findings. Just to highlight two of them, because the rest are pretty general and well, general but specific to this this project, but don't seem to be problematic. And I will open it up to others' comments after I just finished these two summary statements. One has to do with sustainable mixed use development. We should have in there when we finally get it the actual number of live work units that will be increased included on the first floor, whether it's two, four, or whatever number we all agree to in a slightly revised design that we'll look at next meeting. And second item under the findings that I think needs to be highlighted is the is a statement in the high quality development standards about respecting patterns of New England construction, which I have asked the planning director to remove. That was standard language from the smart growth district regulation. And I don't think it's necessary, but the the more specific next sentence is relevant about the building itself and how tall it is and so on. So those are my two comments about waivers. If anyone has anything else they'd like to highlight or see added, this is your chance to do that. Board members, anybody want to add anything to that? Okay, well, move then to the draft conditions, which Andy will have to put on the screen because many of us haven't had time to even look at them. And Andy, I'd like you to walk through these with us.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. And I apologize. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say and highlight those things that you think we need to discuss or the yeah, thank you.
Sure. So I apologize. We were given the materials that came in late or middle to late last week. The turnaround time of feedback from a couple of other city officials. We tried to put this together today to send out to you. And again, like the chair said, I'm just going to summarize these. The number one, these are special conditions. So these are not the the general conditions that go on a smart growth permit as we've seen for one and three Boston Way, but the ones that are unique for this project in some way that we wanted to clarify. So in this case, you know, any input you have on this would be great, whether it's these particular bullets or something you think we should add. But the first one deals with exterior facade detailing. The on the case of one and three Boston Way, we just made reference to a photograph which was attached as an exhibit to the decision, showing the the materials that were submitted in physical form. So in our office, we have at the front counter some of the materials selection, and we would just put a an exhibit as an attachment in addition to the PDF files that we got from Joe and the architect here showing those materials in 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 their drawings, where we actually have some photographs showing the samples that were given to the office for the board members to see at their discretion. So I would just suggest we do the same here and attach that to the decision as an exhibit as well. Pretty housekeeping, I think. Care and maintenance. Number two is care and maintenance of the site improvements. So just making it very clear that the applicant's responsible for not only the initial installation, but also the maintenance of site amenities, landscaping, walkways, and so forth. And you know, jump in here if there's any questions as I go. Number three is because the applicant hasn't proposed at this time signage, and this was, I think, a situation we experienced with one and three Boston Way as well, where it wasn't exactly correct at the outset, what they might desire for signage. This condition require a subsequent submission of that signage material to be looked at. The question I would have here and a pause for you would be whether you'd want, as we have done more typically in recent years, having some things done at a staff level review to, you know, alleviate the board of having to go through a lengthy process for something that might be relatively standard. But if the board is at all concerned about the signage, you know, then obviously that would be something that should be, we would substitute the board in here. But the idea is to have any subsequent signage that's posed for the the retail space or the live work units, or if it's an entrance sign required or desired at the Route One side or the Parker Street side, that those are appropriate and consistent essentially with the way we we looked at it for one and three Boston Way, where we tried to make sure it's signage is not egregious. It's you know, blends with the landscaping if it's a site sign of some type and doesn't obstruct visual, you know, cues and so forth. So just to make sure that it's something that's reasonably appropriate, I would suggest we have a subsequent review of that, given that it's not proposed detail at this time of initial permitting. So that is essentially what this condition does. And I think the primary question here would just be would the would the board want to review that or leave that to the staff to to do as we've done with some other more minor details and permits previously.
Could I suggest that by exception, that it be approved by or reviewed by staff? And by exception, bring it back to the planning board if you think it's significant enough that we should have a look at it.
Yes, definitely. I should I have, again, if you are are find it acceptable for the staff level review, which in this case would be me. I would obviously coordinate with the board if I had any questions or concerns whatsoever, any hesitation with what is submitted by the applicant. So again, I defer to you as a board what you prefer as the condition here. But to the chair's point, I would certainly return to the board if I had any hesitation about what was submitted, any concerns whatsoever.
Yeah, no, I just brought it up so that everybody understands that if we leave your name, your title in there, which I recommend we do, that it is with that understanding. So that's fine.
Understood.
Yeah, it doesn't have to have planning board on it.
Number four deals with the open configuration of the live work units. And actually, this doesn't necessarily even need to speak specifically to deliver units, but actually all the residential units, so we could even refer revise this to residential units. But the idea with the 40 hour district, just as context, was that we aim for a mixed use district, recognizing that the substantial element is going to be housing, but that we try to make sure it's a true mixed use district and not just an isolated, you know, complex of housing buildings. So as we've tried to do with the other buildings, one and three Boston Way, the idea here is to make sure that as consistent with the zoning district and the language and the ordinance itself, the first floor needs to be constructed in order to accommodate future commercial space. Should those uses be substituted or modified in the future, rather than having a building that is just structurally does not allow for that, meaning the ceiling heights aren't tall enough, for instance. So the plan that's been provided by the applicant does show, you know, partition walls that can be removed, you know, column supports and so forth, that appears to be consistent with that expectation. But and prior discussion tonight, there was some discussion about modification of the units to make them, you know, commercial or workspaces. So I think you can see the ability to reconfigure some of that. But this is just to make sure that that's specifically codified a reference in the decision. And this is something that we carried in the one and three Boston Way decisions.
Doesn't this refer to all of the ground floor units and not just the live work units?
It does. It does. My apologies, and I will actually revise or correct that.
Okay. So this is not a specific condition around live work units.
Correct. It is actually for the first floor. And you know, and the applicant's plan does show that breakdown of the supporting walls versus partition walls that could be easily removed. But I do think it's important to codify it here. And as you pointed out, Chair, this initial caption here would be revised to show the first floor.
Anyone else want to be commenting? I'm I'm responding on everybody's behalf, but I don't want to speak for you. Unless you allow me to. If I don't see any hands go up or any grimace, well, I'm not going to look for grimaces. I just want to see hands. Okay, we'll move on.
Number five deals with operable windows. And again, I defer to the board here, but one of the things we talked about for the residential units is trying to make sure that these are really operable windows and not just sort of, you know, basement windows. Again, I don't know if the applicant wants to speak to that or if the board has any questions or concerns, but the idea was to make sure that those units have truly operable windows. Again, a part of that is trying to activate the streetscape. You know, it's an indirect way of doing it, compared to say, you know, a deck or a patio or you know, something like that. But but it does actually add to the connection between the indoor space, the outdoor space, providing fresh air and so forth. So that's to me, to me seems like a reasonable thing to to want here. And again, I defer to the board or the applicant if there's any discussion we had about that particular issue.
That will happen. No problem.
Thank you, Joe.
The number six, I think the chair alluded to this a moment ago in the waiver section, but there was understanding with one and three Boston Way that well, originally expected in the one in the one Boston Way permit, the first one we had under the 40 hour district. There was an expectation that the applicant provide to us prior to the billing permits. The documents that DHCD needs to review and approve, that's the affordable housing documents. This condition has been modified somewhat what we did with three Boston Way, which is to require that to be finalized prior to the occupancy permits in the project. And that's partly because the the bottom line is that DHCD takes a while to do that, and that doesn't really impact the construction side of the building. So there wasn't reason to, in our opinion, to really hold up to the billing permit timeframe, but rather to give a further extension of that timeframe for the DHCD review to happen. So in essence, this condition is is just to make sure that those affordable housing documents are reviewed and approved, you know, by DHCD in a coordination with them prior to the occupancy. And then there's some additional specification at the end of that condition, consistent with the other 40 hour district projects we've had that Miko has done. And this is important for the subsidized housing inventory, because I think as Lou mentioned earlier, this project is 100% rental units. And so because 25% of them are affordable, all the units in the project would count on the subsidized housing inventory. So this condition just clarifies again that the applicant would work with the planning department here, that's Caitlin and myself, to make sure that these are added to the subsidized housing inventory and the city gets credit for them accordingly. We had a condition here, and I'm not particularly attached to it per se, but but you know, we know where these these informations are going to be forthcoming from the developer when they get to this point. But to make it clear that the rental rates we published and provided to the city, you know, you may want to have further discussion about this or the details of the applicant. But the idea here was to make sure that that information is available to us, and we can share with other folks who might be interested in the affordable units.
That's not a problem, Andy. And and our housing consultant, as you know, which is a third party, will be doing this as a matter of course, at any rate.
Right.
Yep.
Number eight deals with the recognition of the adjacent businesses and industrial uses. This was actually, I think, more of an issue with one Boston Way when when that product was proposed. We had, in in the case of the Colby Farm Lane developments, there was recognition that there's municipal facilities down the street, and we wanted to make sure that those housing developments, the residents that bought homes there understood that. So there were some stipulations put in the conditions there and in the association documents that would make it clear for anybody who bought a home there that that is an existing condition that they're they're sort of walking into it for context. That's to make sure that, you know, the new residents moving in, you know, there isn't somehow an expectation that the industrial park just move from its present location per se, although, you know, there may be some migration of uses over time, obviously. But that there not be an expectation that say the Mark Ritchie woodworking, you know, facility just moved because it's it's now perceived as being, you know, a noisy operation or something. So you know, I I'm not saying that that use is is, you know, a problem or anything. But we thought it may be appropriate to carry that same expectation here that anybody who's leasing a unit, just at least understand that there are existing uses there that are not necessarily changing. This one here, maybe of more particular interest to the board, the landscape maintenance. This is going back to discussion. I think it was mentioned earlier here in the landscape presentation part of this, but that the applicant will be responsible for maintaining, you know, the landscaping and amenities that they would coordinate with the Parks Department on any of that. And and in the second paragraph here is really outlined what you've discussed at your last meeting and was reiterated tonight, which is that the applicant would be responsible for the ongoing maintenance of the plantings that they have planted, irrespective of whether it's on the property or the city's right away for the rail trail. All of that, of course, having been coordinated with Tony Vining and the the Parks Department, Lee Reed and Mike Kennedy. But to make sure that they maintain those plantings, and then there was also a discussion and agreement that they would maintain the the small planting beds around the arch that's there near the Parker Street end of the trail. So again, with those areas being maintained by the developer on a go forward basis, given that they've modified the landscaping in that area, the Parks Department will continue to mow the lawn. And if the developer wishes to do anything else in that area, that would be subject to review and approval by the Parks Department. Hill Street and the Parker Street intersection modifications, we had essentially paused on this one. This is to be determined pending the discussions tonight of the three options. So I can now revise this language accordingly to reflect what you've discussed there. I assume the applicant will come back with some further clarification, if any, on the plans. But this would reflect the the discussion tonight where you had a sort of a consensus, if you will, on the option two. Route one and Hill Street sidewalk connection. This one is a little bit more involved, so let me just explain what's going on here. I think, as you know, looking at the site plan, the applicant does not have direct control over the adjacent property. Given the narrowness of the Route One corridor and the existing lane configuration, a lot of which is largely fixed at this point, there isn't a whole lot of room that the applicant has to work with on their property or in the right of way to put a wide sidewalk. We had requested that they do larger than a four foot sidewalk there. For obvious reasons, we think that increased pedestrian traffic coming downhill street to the site, to the rail trail, to the station, that we'd want to improve that connection rather than just a basic forefront sidewalk. So the idea here was that if the applicant is able to secure the additional area needed from the adjacent property to install that additional four foot to make it an eight foot walkway, they would be able to proceed accordingly. And they would be returned funds that they would be putting an escrow on the city side at the time of permitting in order to make sure that this gets done. If it doesn't get done on the developer's side, for some reason, they can't secure that area and have it constructed, that the city could then use those funds to pursue and have it constructed that the city could then use those funds to pursue acquisition of that strip of land. Again, a very narrow strip of unusable land, if you will, on the adjacent property, because it's within setbacks. And, you know, it's up against the street. Anybody in the future would have to put in a sidewalk anyway there. But it's largely, it's not a significant value necessarily of that strip. But to make sure that that strip is actually acquired and the sidewalk is constructed, that would allow the city, I think, to the point that was made earlier tonight, that the city has the ability, if it so wishes, to take that land to do so. But that would allow at least the issue that had been raised in prior meetings of that important connection to be addressed to the best of our ability and the best within the applicant's control in this particular project. So the applicant doesn't necessarily control the adjacent or other properties in the district. You know, in the area that we're trying to make sure that this applicant in making a connection does the best possible connection that they can do. In this case, trying to make sure that with their work and with anything the city might need to do on its end, if necessary, we can secure the area and the funds needed for for additional concrete for a sidewalk that's AB wide in that stretch. So this is essentially saying that the developer would put $20,000 in escrow. That's based on a roughly $5,000, you know, estimation of what the value is, talking with the assessors office, and a small allocation of additional funds, a few thousand dollars more for a concrete, you know, wider sidewalk than they would normally be installing. And then an additional contingency. So we sort of double that number and and say, you know, let's put those funds in escrow. Again, I defer to the board entirely on this, but this was an attempt to craft a condition that recognizing the developers' limitations of what they control and then they're not having the ability to take, you know, someone else's property. But maybe the need to to do something proper here. This was an attempt to sort of craft something between what the board is looking for and what the applicant needs to, you know, deal with on their end.
Andy, would would this be affected at all by the discussion we had earlier about the pedestrian crossing signal?
This change? Yeah, I mean, this this deals with the width of the sidewalk itself. It would seem to me that I'll leave it to Scott Thornton and BAI or Scott Cameron, if they want to speak to or how they follow up on the Masto T end in this intersection. But it would seem to me that irrespective of sidewalk width, which is one issue, that the diagonal crossing of the crosswalk, the relocation of the push button signal that's there today to align the ramps and so forth, all of that would need to be done by the developer, you know, to reconcile with the sidewalk, if it's a four foot or eight foot that they're installing. Either way, we would, you know, end up having an eight foot sidewalk there. But I think in either case, those things would still have to be resolved by the developer. And I think that that portion of the conditions here would have to be crafted accordingly, depending on in the coming days, how Scott and Scott are able to provide feedback to us on their discussions with Masto T. It seems to me that that issue would have to be resolved regardless and appropriately so, irrespective of the additional width for the sidewalk, if I answered your question sufficiently, maybe. Sorry, Rick, did that answer your question or was that?
I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. So again, for the applicant, I think we need to, depending on where you come back, you know, to Rick's point, this there may be additional language that needs to be added to the special conditions to clarify that point. But I don't think that that certainly doesn't relieve any coordination that's needed for that crosswalk at that location and the point that was made earlier tonight. The proposed deceleration lane on Route One, so the applicant has proposed a deceleration lane, which, you know, I think collectively, we've all agreed makes sense here for safe access to the site for those heading southbound or Route One entering the site. This work obviously is still subject to approval by Masto T. I would note, by the way, that I did have verbal confirmation from District Four today that they were conceptually in support of this. They couldn't, you know, speak to the specific plan and dimensions and so forth just yet. But but they did agree in concept that that made sense and they were amenable to working together on the details. I'll defer to the applicant of the discussions they've had with Masto T. But I guess the question here is whether or not we'd want to have some sort of formal confirmation from Masto T prior approval versus a condition such as this, that that the applicant would look to get that approval from Masto T with, you know, support from this office, namely myself, as the person to contact in Masto T. So again, I leave that to you, but it was that was a concern about safety at the northern end of the site and whether or not we needed to close that loop with Masto T at this point versus a condition requiring that follow up after initial site plan approval from the planning board.
Andy, how how sure are you that we can get that approval, that letter of agreement before approving the decision? Because I'd rather have it upfront. We've run into some trouble with other projects where it just dropped on and got forgotten and so on. So if it's actually the letter of agreement is in our hands before we make the decision would be ideal. Is that possible?
Yeah, I I agree with that wholeheartedly. I don't know from experience whether that's feasible, you know, within a few weeks' time, only because, well, they have said that they agree in concept that they certainly agree that that makes sense from a safety perspective and like to have that. I, because they haven't, I don't know that they've looked at the dimensions yet and the specifics, whether or not they'd have any concerns about, you know, I can't imagine anything that would be a problem based on the plans that we've looked at and the applicants work on grading alignment of the roadway, guardrail and trees and so forth in that area. It seems to me that the applicant has looked at all those issues that Masto T would look at. But again, it's hard to say whether or not they'd be able to give the applicant a letter saying, yes, we've approved this in that timeframe. Based on experience, it tends to take a little longer, so.
Andy, I wanted to say, excuse me, Bonnie. I wanted to say that my experience with DOT is they don't do anything in less than three to four months. If you're lucky, I don't know if Scott Thornton can chime in on that, but I definitely months.
Yeah, I was, you jumped in ahead of me, Lou. But but I, you know, I don't believe that they will issue a formal letter of approval until they've reviewed design plans, which is, which is an extensive process. And and, you know, three to four months, I think, would be would be fast. So I, you know, I don't, I don't believe that that we would be able. I think this this type of language that's that's that Andy's shown in this decision is is likely to be as good as we can get in the timeframe that we're we're talking about. Because I don't think they're going to issue a formal approval letter until they go through the design and go through all those, you know, the submittals and everything for it, which which will take, you know, again, three to four months would be fast.
Yeah, and realistically, Scott, what what is that time period? Six months?
Yeah, realistically, it's six months.
Yeah.
Okay, so I understand all that and I I'm fine with it coming later. But I want to see something in this condition that says either it happens or some adjustment is made on the site. Because this is a huge safety issue. If people, even one car, it doesn't matter about the volume. If one car comes off of Route One at speed, it needs, they need, they will need extra space in that north parking lot. So I don't know if that's the right thing to put in here. I certainly don't want to put you on a time limited deadline, such as before the first occupancy permit. But if you'd rather have that, that's fine with me. Those are our our normal ways of of putting a hard stake in the ground to make sure something happens. And I know this is certainly way out of your control when it involves Masto T. But on the other hand, we have to be sure that it is safe to enter the site from that location.
I think, as the chair mentioned, that comes down primarily to a question of whether or not any parking spaces would be removed from the northern lot in order to accommodate where the deceleration lane, if it is not approved by Masto T, worst case scenario, to allow some of that space for arriving car to not run into a car that's backing out of a space.
Yeah, so there's two pieces to this. One is like that, a solution if it doesn't work. But the other piece is what kind of deadline do we want to put in here to make sure that we have a review point? I don't know who came first. Don, go for it.
Yep, Bonnie and Andy, as I read this section now, first time I'm on number 12, my my understanding is that if this doesn't happen, a building permit's not even issued. So it, and if that's not the case, if I'm not saying we want it, then we'd have to even make this language more clear. But as I read this right now, it's not even occupancy permit. It seems to me you couldn't even get a building permit the way this is written, but I'll defer to Andy or or you.
But I think, you know, Bonnie raised a good point, which is that, you know, if Masto T does not, you know, agree to this, then I think you want to have some sort of maybe a control valve that says, you know, you need to come back to the board here to address this or you need to revise the plan to remove some spaces. Because we don't necessarily know that that's going to be approved by Masto T, even though we've been, you know, I've been given a verbal agreement that they think it makes sense here.
Don, to your point, though, they they are saying it could be six months before they get an agreement here. That would hold up the build, the start of the construction.
Well, as long as the applicant, and that's okay, but but I do think this would, to me, would come back. If this is not the case, this would have to come back to the planning board. We make a decision whether it's a minor or major modification and then formally approve whatever design changes made. I again, to your point, it's a safety issue and I think it's important. And so if the applicant is willing to expend all these funds, update occupancy permit, I'm okay. And if that means he loses five, six spaces and somehow messes up his retail operation, then it is what it is.
No, it wouldn't. Absolutely not. They they've got extra. So that that's sort of a release valve, as Andy said. But I'm, I just want to make sure the wording here is changed to something that we can all live with. And I want to hear from Rick and also from anybody on the applicant team.
Thank you. So I think it's, it should be pretty easy to solve this. I don't think we need to put in any type of deadline. I think we just, the wording has to be a little bit more specific in saying the, you know, as shown on drawing C31, the plan calls for a deceleration lane, you know, and is subject to Masto approval. And say something about the fact that construction and use of the north parking lot is contingent on the construction of that deceleration lane. And if that is not provided, then the applicant has to come back for a site plan amendment. And I wouldn't even say it's a minor one. I would say it's a it's a significant one and which may, which may include reduction in parking spaces. I just, I would spell that out so that so that we say that we don't have to tie it to building permit or occupancy. We tie it to actual construction and use of that parking lot.
Great. Thank you.
Lou, did you want to speak to that at all or before we move on? If that is unless there's any other thoughts from planning board members.
Scott, I don't want to, Thornton, I don't want to put you on the spot, but your initial, could you fill us in on your initial conversation to see, to evaluate the extent that this could be a problem or could not?
So, so in terms of my initial discussion with DOT on this, they did not see that that a deceleration lane would be necessary for the north parking lot. And so I I'm a little concerned that we're that we're being kind of held to to the to the idea that that a a deceleration lane would be required when when, you know, the roadway that's under Masto T's jurisdiction is is thought by Masto T to to, or at least this design, is is not is not considered to to be necessary or needing a a deceleration lane. So we've we've looked at the at the number of parking spaces that are there and we've looked at the at the trip generation that's there. And and we're certainly not, you know, we're certainly not looking to to just to not to 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 remove the requirement for for a deceleration or for at least checking with DOT and and trying to get the deceleration lane there. But but given the driveway's location with the adequate site distance that's there, I mean, there's there's the site distance that's available exceeds the the speeds, exceeds the requirements for the speeds that we've observed. So again, we don't, we don't feel.
Scott, let me just interrupt you there, just in fairness to the board and the hearing process we've had to date. Your plans have represented, the plans that we're looking at right now do represent the deceleration lane as being part of the project. It was our understanding to date relative to the parking spaces in that lot that that would be one way of addressing the safety of vehicles coming in the site. Per my discussion today with District Four, there was an agreement that that made sense to have something like that here. I don't know whether they've looked at specific plans that you've sent them, or perhaps you could clarify that. But it seems to be that you're saying it's not necessary, but we're throwing out the plans. But whether or not that happens is is sort of an up in the air. Again, this is the reason why the planning board likes to nail down specifics that are important to the site configuration itself and access to it at the time of permitting, rather than kicking the can down the road. And that does unfortunately require some work by the traffic consultant during the permitting process to make sure that those things are not cans kicked down the road that come back to bite the board or the city.
Right. So so I have I have shown them site plans. And we've, again, we've had these discussions, they've seen these plans, they've seen the latest plan for the deceleration lane. And and we are, we are proposing it. And it is part of the site plan package and part of the the discussions with DOT. My concern is that because they could, they could possibly, you know, in a conceptual agreement that that they, you know, that they are, they are accepting of the concept or of the conceptual idea of a deceleration lane without without seeing or without getting into detail as to the exact letter of 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 the of the design and what aspects they're specifically in favor of. I'm concerned that they could, that's not necessarily a full endorsement of the concept. And and we have, we have reached out to them on numerous occasions to get input. Now, you know, the the design is part of the site plan package and it is something that we'll continue to to work with them to to incorporate into the into the site plans and into the project. But I'm just concerned about hinging everything on their approval, given that they may not, at the end of the day, feel that that it's warranted or that it's necessary.
Right. Well, I'll defer to the board. But again, this is the issue that was raised at the prior meeting or meetings even before that. And and that's the reason why we suggested this issue be nailed down with Masto T's District Four in some capacity. So again, it sounds like what you're saying here is we're throwing out the plans and presenting that to the board is something that we might do. But you're also saying tonight that you're not sure that Masto T's District Four from your discussions would even want that here, which seems to be a contradiction to some degree.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's a contradiction at all. I think it's, it's just the reality of the situation is that, you know, DOT is DOT is the is the final arbiter of the of their design and their their treatment of their shortcuts.
Rick, would you like to jump in?
Yeah, I think we're mixing up two different things here. One, one issue is whether Masto T feels that a deceleration lane is needed from the point of view of the operation of their highway. I think what we're more concerned about is the impact on the parking area once they go off the highway. And I think that, you know, we would be, you know, much less concerned, perhaps, if there were a right angle turn into the lot, like there are many, many roads, rather than an angle turn in that allows people to go fast. So I think it's not unreasonable to say, and I agree, you know, if Masto T doesn't allow a deceleration lane, there's not going to be a deceleration lane. But then we have to redesign the parking. And that's why I wanted to tie the deceleration lane not to occupancy or building permit, but to whether whether that parking lot gets built and what it looks like. So I think, you know, I think that we can, you know, I think that's a safe way to do it, to say, you've got to come back for approved site plan and you might not get as many parking spaces if you don't get the deceleration lane. And I think that's a fair, a fair compromise.
Yeah, I'm I'm with you on that one. We we do, and I'm glad you differentiated the the interest of Masto T versus our interest on the project site plan. So I do want to see that language in there, Andy, if if you can incorporate that. Because it doesn't hold up the applicant from doing their project. It just says we have to come back and look at. It just says we have to come back and look at the configuration of that parking lot to ensure safety once people are on your property.
Madam Chair, this is Lumen Acucci again. I, I just want you to know that from my perspective, as a developer, I'm firmly committed to doing everything that we can to, to get the deceleration lane. I know that doesn't affect any of the language that you're proposing, but just, just so that you know, we are committed to making that, do, doing everything we can to get that deceleration lane.
I'm glad to hear it, and that would solve a lot of problems or keep us from having to discuss it anymore. But we will leave it in here as a condition.
I get it, no problem.
Okay, great.
So Lou, we will make that adjustment, like Chair Santan just said, that, you know, if, if you're not able to secure that, you'll have to return to the board for an adjustment to that northern parking lot to address the, the issue that was a concern here.
Yeah, frankly, I think a big help would be the city's commitment in helping us get it. Because if it comes down to the point where DOT doesn't feel as though it's really necessary or warranted, sometimes they'll succumb to the wishes of the community, in this case, the city. So I think that your firm backing will definitely help our cause.
Sure, and that's, that's why specifically I noted that in the condition here and why I'd reached out to Mast G O T to try to close that loop and let them know that we at least support that and believe it's important at this location.
Yeah, I, I, I know Secretary Canely is, is very concerned about, or very supportive of the smart growth district and everything that's possible to develop more housing throughout the state. And he would, he would help intercede if possible, if there's any basis for, for, for him. But I think we'd have a lot of allies on, on the state side to get Mast G O T to approve it if they, if they can feel like it's within their jurisdiction to do so. But if they feel comfortable doing it.
Great, that's good to know. Let's move on to the other conditions here.
Number thirteen deals with Parker Street drainage. The city engineer had noted he wanted to make sure that he had a chance to review any of the drainage connections specifically in the right of way there and the way that the drain line there is being dealt with. So I don't know if Scott Cameron, you could speak to that, but this requires that to be reviewed by him in a little more detail prior to the billing permit for the project. And the physical work completed prior to occupancy. So is that an issue or concern on your end?
Go ahead, Scott.
It's, it's not an issue. I've spoken to John Eric about the set length. We're, we're on the same page with what needs to get done.
Number fourteen deals with the commercial space marketing plan, and I think this came up from prior planning board discussion here on the hearing, was getting some proof of adequate marketing for the separate commercial space. Again, trying to make it as vital, by lifting the vitality as much as possible of this area and supporting the businesses to, to get some information on how it's marketed and so forth. So that and a little work units. So again, I don't know if there's any questions or concerns from either board members or, or the applicant. But the idea there was to get some information for the board and for the city to understand how well that area has been marketed to make it viable.
Looks like it's good to go. I'm wondering if we need to have a condition relating to solar panel installation?
Thank you, Chair.
It's mentioned on the plan that the details will be worked out with MEP Rooftop Solutions. But I'd like to see if nobody has any objection to it, solar installation before first occupancy. Would that work for everybody? Rick?
It was a different comment that I'm coming on.
Okay, Don, are you commenting on this one?
Yes, I am. I was going to, thank you for suggesting that, and I agree with you. I was also going to add, either as a condition, or perhaps they could put it on the drawings, unless I'd missed it. But I don't see any place for EV charging stations. And it seems to be why you can retrofit this, ten years from now, we'll all be in EV. But even now, it would seem to me there would be some EV charging stations, and I don't know whether the applicant has considered this at all. And the last item, I'm sorry.
I just thought they were already in the garage, but we'll have to ask them for confirmation.
Yeah, I, I, I may have missed it on the drawing. Are they, are they in the garage? I didn't see it on the drawings.
Don, I'm not, I'm not certain, and I'll leave that to Lumen Acucci. I'm going to leave that up to Joe to speak to. But I can tell you on one Boston Way, we're installing EV stations. And on Free Boston Way, we're going to equip them a significant number of spaces, both outside and inside for EV. So we're currently doing one hundred and thirty-six unit project in North Endover that's under construction, and we're doing the same. So the reality of it is that you really need EV stations if you're going to rent to, you know, if you're going to appeal to the broader rental market. And so we've, so we will have charging stations. I can't tell you how many and where, but we'll have a certain amount in the garage for certain and potentially some outside as well.
Lou, could you, is there any indication of what to say the floor would be for that? Would it be two or four, maybe that the board could at least reference in this decision as being a base? Is there any kind of a?
I, I think we're going to want to, we're going to put in the infrastructure to do more than half, I'm certain. I'm not sure how many we will fire up, but initially, but there will definitely be EV stations. That's really just a, a marketing reality that's needed. You, you'll, in the, in a short period of time, you'll have tenants who want to rent. And they'll have an electric car, and if you don't have a charging station, they're not going to rent. And as, as Don said, in ten years, the majority, many of the people will have electric stations. We can, I can get back to you on specifics, Andy? If that's what you.
Could you, you'll be able to do that prior to the next meeting of the, for the planning board, or?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess, I guess what I was thinking here, and Don, I'll defer to you, but maybe the, the thought here is to include at least a base expectation for this project in the decision, rather than leaving it silent and understanding that, you know, you may faithfully fall through on that.
Again, I, I personally, I like the, having the infrastructure for fifty percent and ten percent of the spaces would be active now. And my sense is they would either do at least more of the active, but that to me would be reasonable.
Right, this is Scott Cameron, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
A term I'd suggest you, you look into using is, is EV ready? So to Don's point about the infrastructure being in place, this is a, it's kind of a slippery slope to be conditioning. Only that, the benefits to EV station, we understand with the fossil fuel dependency on the, on automobiles helps out. But we also have the power grid to keep in mind, because it does change the demand for the building and the infrastructure transformers. And there's a trickle down effect across the whole system. So it's not, it's not necessarily a simple, we got to have this. It might be an unattainable condition, but I've been using the term EV ready, where you, we basically put in the conduit or the piping, which doesn't typically have a huge expense to it so that in the future, when the grids come online, they're ready to go. You know, we have the power to supply to these things, they can be retrofitted and put in at a certain point in time. I just be concerned about a condition that wouldn't be attainable.
Oh, Scott, I, I guess, I'm, I'm sorry to disagree with you, but I think there does need to be a minimum. And taking your worst case example, that one needs to upgrade the infrastructure or even to EV stations, which happens sometimes to sole units, they got to pay for a new transformer, even a resident. I, I think that's something that the applicant, on a personal basis, Lou, Lou would be, would do so. I appreciate having the conduits in there and not even actively, you always have issues, I understand, with fire, fire department. But there needs to be a minimum number of active stations. And no matter what the number is, I think, as Lucy said, that they're going, you're going to surpass that. But I do think, to Andy's point, we need to put a, a number in there. And I don't know, ten, ten to me would sound like a nice round number, but.
Don, I was just going to say, if we, we've got ninety-two units and we're going to do fifty percent, that's forty-six. And ten percent of forty-six is five, so call it six. So we would, we would put six active units in and, and, and do fifty percent of the bounds. I think that's pretty much what we're doing on Three Boston Way, and that wasn't even a condition. You didn't condition it, but we're doing.
We're getting smarter, right, Lou and Alan, we're finding that everyone's going to the issues of premature, so.
If I wasn't required to do it, and I did it, you know, now you have some, you know, I, I guess I'm committed to doing it. So we'll do fifty percent and six.
Lou, I, Bonnie, I'll defer to you, but believe me, if this, if this special permit was in the name of Lou, I would be okay, but it's in the name of an LLC, so be safe, Lou.
Okay, good. Rick, let's hear from you.
Thank you. I had two additional conditions that I'd like to propose. One, I wasn't sure whether it should go under number two on care and maintenance of proposed site improvements or be its own condition. But it would have to do with year-round maintenance, full width maintenance of the connection between the rail trail and Route One. So keeping it for, for public access. So that the, the point of that, that point of that eight-foot path is to provide public access from the, from the rail trail to, to the Hill Street Crossing. And I think it should be reflected in the decision. So I think if we said that, that the, the applicant or owner will provide year-round full width maintenance of the eight-foot path from the rail trail to Route One for public access. That would, that would put, that would document that the purpose of that. The other one, which goes back to the, believe it or not, back to the north parking lot, is that had something to do with a management plan to ensure that only compact cars are assigned to tenant parking in the north lot. Because if you recall, the, the space was reduced to, by, by making those all compact car spaces. So we want to make sure that there aren't any pickup trucks or SUVs parked there. So that, that kind of complicates the, the management plan for parking. But I think that is important to ensure that only compact cars are assigned to those tenant spaces in the north lot.
Any other additions to the conditions? Don, your hand's up, is it meant to be?
Yes, I, I wanted to put it up again, thank you. I, I wanted to, perhaps had one other one, and it kind of follows up what Beth said last week, and I think Alden as well. And that is, there was some discussion coming out of the driveway and making a right-hand turn. And immediately when you get the right-hand turn, you, you hit the, the rail trail crossing. And there was concern that when they stop, they may just continue and not necessarily see the other stop sign. So one thing I was thinking of is that the stop sign would be electrically connected to the rail trail. So when someone hits that and that, you know, that flashes there, it would also flash the stop sign that's at the end of the driveway. And so we just provide something more visual to someone exiting the driveway, making right-hand turn, that there's someone entering or in the rail trail crossing. So I throw that out if, if that makes sense to the rest of the board or the applicant, thanks.
Yep, Madam Chair, this is Scott.
Yeah.
That, that's, it's, it's a great idea. I, I like that idea. I, I don't know if we covered the change or it was noticed, but we went to a fifteen-foot radius curb to three-foot bullnose to mimic what is across the street at One Boston Way. So the other way we addressed the cars turning out into the trail as we're making that movement, a little precarious. So they're going to have to pay attention making that turn, or they're going to hit the curb. I don't know if that was jumping out on the plan or not, but I want to make sure the board was aware of that.
Would it not? What's my, I'm trying to make it clear. Would it be safer, though, in addition to the design of the exit to do this linking of the crosslight, crossing light and the stop sign at that corner?
I, I think it's, I think it's a reasonable ask, and it's, it's not, it's, it's a good idea. I just, I wanted to make sure the board knew that we didn't ignore that, that condition, that we did do that work.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be a condition, it should be added to the plan. Right?
Yes, we didn't ignore the board's request, not condition, it was a poor use of a word. We did try to address that before, I was, I was making sure that you knew that.
No, Scott, I think what, I think what Bonnie is suggesting is that we incorporate in our plan a flashing stop sign that connects to the crosswalk. Now, if that's, if that's at all possible, I'm certainly amenable to it. I, it would be a really, that's, was a really good idea. I don't know what it takes to do that. You know, I know anything's possible, but so I'm suspecting we can do it.
Yeah, that's what I meant, thanks, Lou.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll look for that on the items that we're going to confirm at the next meeting that we've discussed that are separate from the conditions.
And Lou, or I guess Scott Thord, maybe one of you, maybe Scott Cameron, one of you will circle back and clarify on that confirmation that, that that can be done?
Yes, we'll confirm it, I'm, I'm fairly confident.
It can, right, it would be something similar to what's, to what's there now at the, at the trail where it's been, I think the detection has been upgraded to automatic, so it's just a presence for
Right.
for anyone on the trail, triggers the flashing lights. So it would, it would work the same way, it would just be a detector that would be there.
Okay, I would ask you, in addition to the condition, obviously, we would write in the decision here, I would ask you to just put a notation on the plan of that location as well, for obvious reasons.
Okay, I think we're done for tonight, right?
Yeah.
I'm assuming you want to come back on our next meeting, no. Yes, our next meeting, February second?
Yes, that's fine with us.
Okay, we'll look to confirm all of the outstanding issues that we seem to have agreed to. And also review the special conditions. And who knows, we might be ready for a vote.
Well, that would be nice.
We never make promises like that, but that is the deadline, as, as you well know, for making a decision. So if we all see that there's still something outstanding that we think needs to be confirmed before we take a vote, we would need an extension from you that night. Just so you know. But for now, I will thank you. For now, I will take a motion to continue this public hearing until February second. Who wants to make the motion?
I'll make the motion, Rick.
Thank you, second?
I'll second, Alden.
Okay, I have to call roll for agreement. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Thank you, everybody, for your good work tonight.
Bonnie, a question, when, what is the date by which the revised plans need to be submitted for that meeting?
No less than one week in advance of the meeting, so the Wednesday prior. I'm assuming Scott and, and others here, Joe, you'd have any revised plan sheets to us by then?
Yes, we can do that.
But yeah, do Wednesday, yep.
Good, okay. We will move on to our second public hearing for tonight.
Once again, thank you, Bonnie, for, for the, all the board's time, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you to you and your team for being with us tonight. All right. Caswell Restaurant Group, Seventeen Twenty-One State Street, a DOD special permit application. I will call on the applicant or their representative to please present your application.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Mead, Mead Tellman, Costa Thirty, Green Street. On behalf of Caswell Restaurant Group, and with me this evening is Jeff and Nancy Caswell. Also, if I could just note for the, either Andy or Caitlin, a different architect is joining us from who I sent you earlier this evening, her name is Julia Meridie. Meridian. And so if you see her, maybe you could promote her as well. So when it thank you very much, Andy. So we are here this evening for the structure at seventeen to twenty one State Street for a DOD special permit. And as the board is aware, I presume you've gotten the report from the Historic Commission. The applicant has been in front of the Historic Commission as is required under the ordinance and received a report from them. The applicant proposes to change the storefront by modifying the windows to be operable and to also re, reface the sign, so to speak, by just actually changing the name to Brian on the sign. And I'm going to talk to you about that technique a, as we get a little further on, which is recommended by an architect historian who came out and did the, the overview and inventory and examination of the historic materials. So specifically, as I said, the Caswells seek to replace the windows in the storefront on the first floor of the building and restore the banner sign directly over the windows and change the name on it to Brian. The Historic Commission has issued their review. And you will see that we believe that the Caswells and their architect has taken great efforts to be sure that the proposed windows are consistent and don't take away from the subject historic building, structure or exterior features the lot where it is located or it's setting within the DOD. By way of background, this property does have a, is located in B two zoning district. The building and use are fully conforming to the use and dimensional requirements of the ordinance. The lot is approximately thirty one hundred square feet with approximately thirty five feet of frontage on State Street. The building is approximately thirty feet tall. The use is a restaurant, as I said, on the first floor with residences on the upper floor is allowed by right. The building was constructed in or around eighteen twenty. It has a Form B and the property is listed as contributory in the district data sheets. The building was construct, was updated in nineteen forty one to the current motif and the storefront windows were installed. So if we could go to the first slide after this. So here's the Form B. Sorry for the photo, the way it is, but that's the way it is on the Form B. You go to the next slide, please. And the next one. So I just, that, that was included in our submission. So what we have is a series of photos here just to give, you know, one of the requirements of the DOD is to provide historic context. I believe if you read the ordinance, it's also to provide the city with essentially a record of the historic context and a record of the building or structure that you are seeking to modify or have, have changes to. So we gathered up a number of photos that we were able to find from various sources. So here's a photo looking up State Street in eighteen forty from Market Square. Next slide, please. And here's a winter we hope doesn't happen to us this year from State Street looking from Middle Street up State Street. Next slide, please. Again, we're looking up State Street here. Of course, this building would be on the la, on the left. Next stage, next slide, please. This is eighteen ninety to eighteen ninety nine. We're looking down from Pleasant Street. So the building would be on the right in the middle of that block. Next slide, please. And this is nineteen hundred looking down State Street. Next slide, please. This is the, when Ms. Pecknick was a member of the Historic Commission a year or so ago. Historic Commission had a meeting about Fowls. This is before any applications were for, but she found some photos that she presented. So this is after the storefront windows were put in in nineteen forty one. And you can see the, the Fowls building right there in the middle. Next slide, please. And here's the article about how, in fact, Mr., the owner at the time, updated the building. The, the report that was provided to the board is that, you know, as times changed and the economy changed, people started to drive cars and shop by cars and there would be any number of storefronts that changed from having smaller windows to more open windows. And that was in response to the economy of the time. Next slide, please. And here is a slide down State Street. So you can see Fowls right across the, the street there. Next slide, please. And so here we have also part of the requirement is of course to have current condition photos. And so these are slides from this past summer of the, the windows and the sign above. Next slide, please. And again, here's a little closer up of the, of the banner sign and the storefront along with the windows in the storefront. Next slide, please. And again, here's another, another shot of that same thing. Next slide. Again, another shot of the front of Fowls. Next slide. As I'm here, I'm going to just say to you that, that we'll see in the plans here that we've provided more dimensions on. By and large, these openings are staying. And the, the aluminum bands around will be changed slightly to hold the new windows. The black below is staying, the column is staying. The aluminum band above is staying. The windows will remain fixed on either side of the front door. We'll talk about that in a minute. And then as recommended by Dr. Selwyn, the banner sign will be cleaned off and Brian will be painted on top of it. And because the Fowls is actually etched into the sign, that will remain on the sign. Next slide, please. And again, another shot looking up State Street. So as I've noted, the, the proposal is to replace the windows in the storefront on the first floor of the building and restore the banner sign and have the sign depict, of course, the new tenant in the building. You might recall that the applicant received a variance from the zoning board to allow for operable windows in the summer, early summer. In the meantime, the city also changed the ordinance to allow also a decision to allow operable windows. But as part of that variance process, the applicant did agree that it would appear before the Historic Commission and this board to actually have the actual windows approved. So they, as I said, engaged a consultant, historic consultant, Dr. Selwyn to review the materials and conditions of the existing conditions and make recommendations. I've provided that report to you as to, as also to the Historic Commission. And the applicant is proposing to install the operable stacking windows, which we will talk about, which Julia will talk about in a minute with new metal trim that will surround the window frames. As I noted, the windows most adjacent to the doors will remain fixed and their banner sign will be cleaned and the old paint removed and Brian will be painted on that sign. Next slide, please. So with that, I'm going to let Julia explain these drawings. I will say that all of the drawings were updated since the Historic Commission at the recommendation Historic Commission concerning dimensioned and making sure all the materials were noted on the drawing. So we also provided a different sample of the window. So it was be clear for the board. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Julia and maybe Julia, you can talk about how these windows will work and what the plans are for the installation and renovations.
Thank you. This is Julia Meradian with Seeger Architects in Salem, Massachusetts. So as you see here in this drawing, we are keeping the windows to the left and right of the opening in the same dimensions as the existing windows. And then the windows that are angled into the front door will be fixed windows. The front windows are shown as frameless stacked windows. They have a four inch brushed stainless top and bottom rails to them. And they open from the inside angled wall to the outside walls of the building. So they will stack, as you see in the top drawing, to the outside walls. And you can see in the drawing that showing the four inch stainless top and bottom. So that will be slightly different from what you see now with the fixed windows. It'll be a slightly bigger top and bottom rail, but it is already has the metal above and below. So it is matching that. And the picture here to the right just shows an example of what these windows would look like. This is also showing the brine lettering above in the existing location of where the Fowls is. And as Lisa stated, the Fowls is etched in, so that will remain behind the sign. So that will always still be there. And as she mentioned, we're, we're keeping the, the metal that is above the windows. We're keeping all of the black and whites around as is. So basically, it's just taking the windows out of their opening and replacing them with these stackable and fixed windows. And the sign above will be cleaned up, as she mentioned, so that, that slight bit of the new store that you see now will no longer be seen as well. Next slide. So this is just a colored rendering of what it would look like. So as you can see, again, everything the same. And then the sign cleaned up and the stackable windows. Next slide. And here's the specification for the window. So showing you the top and bottoms stainless rails. They're squared to match the style of what is there now and the glass. So it's a really clean look. Next slide. So the existing Fowls, we are going to match the size and the lettering to have the brine look as similar as we could to the existing Fowls lettering. So we're matching the sign. These were some of the examples we're looking at. The W and the S in Fowls are very unique and there's no font that exists that matches that exactly. And the O and S are divergent from the rest of the letters. So we are using a combination of fonts to closely match the Fowls as much as we could. And in looking at these options, the one circled is the one that we are presenting today. The R in the brine most, most closely matches and is reminiscent of the O in Fowls. And as you can see, the, the W is rounded. So the N in brine has the rounded edges to it as well. And then the F, L and E are very straight lined letters. So the B, I and E match those letters as well. Next slide. This again is describing how we were able to come to the size of the lettering and the type of lettering. The Fowls letters are different from the new store. The new store is completely different in every way. It's different size, different fonts than the existing Fowls. So we are matching the Fowls fonts. So all of these sides, it talks about the letterings of each of the letters in the Fowls are matching with the brine. Next slide. So once again, just showing you how the brine would look across and how it does match the Fowls existing as close as we can get it.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you.
So you go to the next slide, please. So under the DOD, as you are well aware, you have to, the applicant must address the special permit criteria generally in ten H seven of the ordinance as well as the DOD special permit criteria. So for the record, I'll go through that criteria. So the first is that the use is listed on the table of use regulations. Here is noted, the property is located in the B two in the DOD and the use is allowed by right. Next is that the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience welfare. Here, again, the use is not changing. It's allowed by right. It's a restaurant. It was a restaurant. It's going to be a restaurant. And that is consistent with the ordinance. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion, unduly impair pedestrian safety. Again, there's no change of use and so, or there's no change to the structure and therefore this criteria is not impacted. The next is the requested use will not overload any water drainage or sewer systems or generally the public welfare. Again, there's no change of use or the size of the structure and therefore the criteria is not impacted. Next is that any special regulations for the use set forth in the special permit table are fulfilled. There are no special regulations for this use. It's allowed by right. The next is the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or the adjoining district. Again, the use is allowed by right. And we're not changing the structure. It's fully conforming and not changing. Number seven is the requested use will not, by its addition to the neighborhood, cause an excess of that use. Again, there's no change of the use. The use is allowed by right and therefore the criteria is not impacted. Number eight is that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. Here, the use is allowed by right. We're not changing the use and there won't be any changes to the infrastructure itself. And then finally, the proposed use shall not be conducted in a manner to essentially be dangerous or cause nauseous or nuisance. And the use is allowed by right and it's not changing. And certainly the construction of the windows won't cause any problems. But more specifically is the DOD special permit criteria. Which, you know, the DOD section twenty seven F five provides that new construction and alterations must be compatible with the historic buildings and structures within the DOD. And then, of course, they have a number of criteria. And here we believe that what is being proposed, in fact, meets this criteria and the board can find that it does. And specifically that it won't disrupt the essential form and integrity of the building. The, one of the reasons there was a significant gap of time between when the variance was received and when we are appearing before the Historic Commission and now this board is that the Caswells and the architects took a significant amount of time to find windows that matched as closely as possible the current windows, but still provided the operability that they needed in the building. And so I think that you'll find that these windows, they do that without providing the separation with the muttons, but still provide the operation of the building. And in fact, quite frankly, just as the windows were changed in nineteen forty one to meet current economic times, so is the windows being proposed now to meet current economic times. We don't believe it will disrupt the essential form integrity of the lot where it is located. Obviously, there's no changes to the structure itself. And certainly the change to the windows, it's our opinion, as it's being proposed, won't change the lot where it's located or the setting within the DOD. The storefront will remain, the windows, while different, will also be unimpede the, the historic area and the setting within the DOD. And then finally, the new construction will be compatible to size, scale, height, color, material and character of the building, the lot and the setting within the DOD. There's no change to the colors here. The size, scale or height. There is a slight change to the width of the band that holds the window as as Julia expressed. But there is no significant change to that and the rest of that storefront will stay the same. And the banner sign will stay the same with the new name of the, of the business on top of it. And next slide, please. So I just actually went over all of these things. And so we believe that the proposed alterations to the windows by making them operable will be compatible with the historic structure and the structures within the DOD and the purpose of the DOD as well, and would request the board's consideration and approval of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going, just so everybody knows what we're going to do with this, I'm going to ask the board to pose any questions or comments on what they've heard so far. Then I'm going to go ask for public comment. And then I'm going to bring it back in for further discussion based on what we hear from the public in case we want to add additional questions or comments for the applicant. So there'll be two times for the board to comment with public input in the middle of that. So for the first round of board comments, I saw Bob's hand go up first.
Thanks, Chair. Just, just a couple of quick questions. A very interesting proposal. I'm wondering if you can speak to any potential energy code issues. So I'm, I'm assuming the vertical joints on these are not So I'm assuming the vertical joints on these are not particularly tight joints. So I'm wondering if there's any code issue related to that, or if you have addressed that in some other way. Also wondering if, I believe the frame that you showed, top and bottom, is four inches. And that seems to be based upon the kind of panel that you're showing in the photograph that's on the screen, which is more, more kind of door height. And I'm wondering if that four inch dimension is a requirement, or whether that could be reduced at all.
I'm going to let Julia answer those questions relative to energy and the width of the framing.
Yes, so the building is historic, so there is no energy code that needs to be followed. But we would be, in the winter, putting interior removable storms. They will also be using either infrared heat on the interior by the windows or kind of forced hot air coming down in front of the windows on the interior. And then the, the four inches is what the manufacturer has as their size. I know that's showing a door type in the picture, but we've showed in our drawing what the four inches would look like. So the style of the windows, that's a standard. We can possibly work with the manufacturer to see if we could get a different size, but that's the standard size.
Thank you. Alden?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. You had mentioned that the two angled windows going towards the door are fixed. Are those also going to be replaced with similar looking things, even though they are fixed? Or do the existing windows that are there remain in place?
So I want to, I'm going to answer part of this, and then maybe Julie, you can answer it. I want to be clear that I'm informed that all of these windows actually have been replaced. They're not the original windows from 1941. Just as a matter of a point of clarification. And so I'm not sure, are they going to reuse those windows themselves? Julia, do you know? Or will those be replaced? Julia, you may be muted.
Julia, you're muted at present.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yes. So they will be replaced, and they will match the look of the new stackable windows.
So they'll have the same four inch aluminum?
Yes.
Styles?
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
Rick?
Thank you. I had the same question that Bob had about energy issues. And following up on your answer, the interior storms, will they be? What will they look like? Will they have frames that will be visible from the outside, or will they be frameless?
They will have frames, but they will be within the window style of the folded windows. So they're very thin aluminum frames, so you won't see them from the exterior.
Okay. Bob, your hand is still up. Does it need to be?
No, sorry.
Don, you're?
Yeah. Thank you. You mentioned before something about this was a standard dimension. Does this manufacturer manufacturers you're considering have samples that this planning board could take a look at, and similar question for the storm windows if they're similar? This is not without precedent. We've asked in the past for even residential housing to take a look at some windows that were being proposed, and at least myself, if something was available, it probably, well, it would be helpful to me at least. Thank you.
Yes, I'm sure we could get a sample from the manufacturer, and we can get shop drawings as well.
That would be great. And if you leave them in the planning office, they will notify us, and we can go by and have a look at them.
Okay.
Good. I have a question on the stat health. Maybe I just didn't look at it closely enough, but how thick is the stacking on either end when the windows are fully open?
So if you take a look at the picture, it really stacks quite thin, which is why we went with, one of the reasons we went with this manufacturer, if you can zoom out to the plan up above.
If you go to the plan on Slide 21, Andy, please.
It's in the upper left-hand corner.
There we go.
It doesn't actually give a dimension, does it?
No, but you can see how thin they stack is. Oh, my screens.
Oh. Are we, we're not going, we're just going to have one panel when you bring the sample, so we're not going to see effectively, we couldn't really.
Yeah, the shop drawings can, will tell you how wide that stack will be.
Okay, so we'll look for that when we go in to see the see the sample.
Yep.
Okay, for now, I'm gonna, yeah.
They also stack 120 degrees against the wall.
Okay. Fine, thank you. I'm going to leave the planning board comments to the side now, and I want to open public comment. If you would like to speak, please raise your electronic hand. When you start, we'd like to know your name and your address, and try to limit your comments to two minutes. As it's really late for all of us now. If you want to say something that someone has already said, we would appreciate it if you would just say, I agree with so-and-so about whatever, and then keep it to a minimum. We appreciate everything everybody has to say. That's why we hold this public comment session, so we do want to hear from anyone who would like to speak. Andy, will you please call on people?
Sure. First person we have is Glenn Richards.
Hi there, Glenn Richards, 6 Kent Street. I'm with the Newbury Heart Historical Commission, but I'm speaking on my own behalf. You have the report of the, that reflects the view of the commission, so I won't review that. You already have that. Just wanted to add two quick things. One is I can't, it's almost impossible to overstress the importance of what's been referred to as the iconic foul storefront. And I really think it's important to preserve that as one of the recognizable icons of our city. I came here in 1980. It was, then it was still an actual newsstand. So I totally understand that times change, uses change. It's, that's understandable, and I certainly have no objection to that and understand it. But it'd be, I think that if the board and the applicant can manage to keep that iconic storefront as accurately or as preserve it as, and restore it as pretty much as Dr. Selman suggested, but I have reservations about the windows, but that's another story. That would be great. And I also wanted to comment about the condition, because, you know, especially the existing conditions photos, it doesn't look very good. Of course, that was taken during a time of transition, you know, Brian was not operating as a restaurant yet. And, you know, the board should keep in mind that the lousy condition of the sign, you know, was, that's the landlord's fault. You know, they, they just neglected it for quite a few years, and that's why it looks as bad as it does now. And lastly, it's disappointing that the applicant didn't bother to make corrections, which were pointed out when they were for the Historical Commission. If you look on that Slide 21, that's A1, you were just looking at that a few minutes ago. It still calls, it still calls it edging along the top galvanized. It's not galvanized. It's aluminum. And it refers to the panels in the bottom. It says something like fiber panel. It's not fiber. It's structural glass, as they well know. And it's frustrating, because you guys have, just as we on the board, you know, want to have drawings that are accurate and correct and reflect what's actually going to happen. Maybe I sound paranoid, but, you know, we've been burnt too many times by things not being quite right. So just a couple of things to pay attention to, and I'll that's all in there. Thanks.
Thank you. Next person is Tom Calderjohn.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Tom Calderjohn, 64 Federal Street, co-president of the Newbury Port Preservation Trust. Like many in Newbury Port, I lament the passing of fowls and the loss of part of the old historic storefront there. I understand that the glass from 1941 or thereabouts will be changed. The windows, unfortunately, would be reduced by a total of eight inches. Four inches on the bottom and four inches on the top. I do appreciate that the font on the sign will closely mimic the original font on the foul sign. It is critical in terms of preservation that what is done to the sign be reversible. And this appears to be the case. This should be a condition of approval. I am concerned that the drawing does not clearly enough note what will remain untouched or unchanged. For instance, it would help greatly if it stayed that all panels will remain. The dialogue box above the brine sign only points to the N in the brine. In brine, if there are panels, glass panels to be replaced, they should be clearly specified. Another condition of approval should be clarity concerning the glass panels other than the sign. The black glass panels below, for instance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Growitz, you're the next speaker.
Hi, John Growitz, 149 Merrimack Street. I just wanted to comment on the plan. I think that it's great that they are changing the font to reflect what was once there at Fowls. I think that this will be a great improvement to State Street. It's kind of sad to see what's happened to the outside of that particular spot. And I look forward to those improvements and enjoying times at Pride. That's all.
Thank you. Next person we have is a caller ending in number 407. And I believe you might have to press star nine to unmute. Are you with us?
Hello, this is, am I being read loud and clear?
Yes.
Oh, good. This is Reg Bacon at 21 Strong Street in Newbury Port. I have followed this application since the plans were first proposed early last year. And I'm glad to say, after enduring the hearings last year, that a solution may be near unacceptable operative windows at the former Fowls storefront. But anyone who sat through all those hearings must have a new appreciation for the patience and calm of our city's volunteer board members. So thank you to the planning board as well. Continuations of this application before the zoning board, I was heartened to learn of the new plan for the banner sign facing State Street, and that all changes would be reversible, always the ideal in historic preservation. But then I saw the present plan for the sign typography. In short, I beg the board to insist on some professional typographic consultation. I bring just a bit of experience to this topic. More than 50 years as an editor, designer, and typographer, and author of two books on the subject, published in the first century, incidentally. I realize there is no accounting for taste and that the craft has been devalued. But even a 20-minute consult with a newly minted professional will result in something better than a amateur cobbling of incongruent typefaces. As for the rest of the plan, I guess I'm a double pain in the neck tonight because I currently work and publish in the history and preservation field. Whatever may or may not be approved, my concern now is for enforcement of any conditions. Far too many times in recent years, we have seen an applicant's halo slip when nobody is watching, and half a historic building is haul the way in a dumpster. The applicant's response is, you know, oops, it couldn't be saved. I would not like to see that happen again. In the last year, the applicant's disregard for the permitting system and the contempt for the city's pro-preservation zoning laws offer no basis for trust. I'm also noting that the applicant's challenge to the validity of the DOD is still active. I believe it is important to note at this time that our city's pro-preservation zoning laws were unanimously approved in 2014 by our citizen-elected city council after an election in which every single one of the regressive say no to preservation candidates was soundly defeated by citizens favoring the common good. My hope is that our city boards continue to take these citizen-favored pro-preservation laws seriously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised at this time, Chair. We do have one other. Stephanie Nicodet? Stephanie, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Stephanie Nicodet, 93 High Street. I do have three questions. Oh. One is a question that was never discussed by the Historical Commission and is not in their report. The applicant says in the application that the banner sign will be restored. There are three panels in the sign that seem not to be original. These are the panels containing the letters E, W, T, O, and R, E, which you can see in the applicant's presentation. Are these panels original structural glass or bona fide replacements of structural glass? Are they addressed in the proposal? I don't see this. So I think it's important to understand what the applicant means when they say restoring. Restoring is not just cleaning and repainting new letters on the sign. Another question, which was not addressed at the Historical Commission and is not really addressed in the application, is reversibility. So reversibility is a DOD criterion for alterations. And my question is, are all of the alterations proposed, the whole storefront, the entire storefront, not just the windows or an architectural feature of that building? So changes to the windows and banner sign lettering and the structural glass below the windows and on the on the middle pole, are any changes to those going to be easily reversible? The third thing is something that the Historical Commission did address in their report, and that is the treatment of the black Carrera glass below the windows and on the pole. And the applicant at the Historical Commission had some specific answers about what would be done to repair any issues in that part of the building and what would be retained. And I didn't hear any of that tonight. So I hope the planning board will grill down on these issues of restoration, repair, retention, and reversibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person we have is Ron Delowski. And Ron, you'll need to unmute on your end as well.
I thought I had.
We hear you.
Okay, you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Hey, I want to thank everybody for giving me the chance to speak. I'm going to try to be brief. My name is Ron Delowski. I'm from Pittsburgh, where it seems the stunning glass on the Fowls facade may have been manufactured by the company then known as Pittsburgh Plate Glass. My wife Barbara Lay and I first visited Newbury Port around 1985. Honestly, we fell under the town spell and returned, I would say, at least once a year for the next few decades. Every time we came, we'd noted the foul sign like a sort of beacon. It gave us a sense that while everything else around us was changing, that storefront was not. Perhaps, maybe I'm overstating this, but it was kind of a North Star of sorts for us. And now we face the wholesale eradication of that icon for no other reason than a newly minted restaurateur wants their name there. Well, I can say this, it may be their restaurant, but it's our sign, the community sign, Newbury Port sign. And think about signs today, almost no And think about signs today. Almost no one actually needs them in the way they once did. Locals and tourists can find Brian by walking down the street, and those from out of town simply GPS it. The sign doesn't need to be changed for any good reason. This is just an attempt to literally paint over Newburyport's past. Ms. Mead's comment that the sign is being restored, as others have noted, is specious at best. If no one's world is removing the Fowles logo type and the other painted text restoring. Let's be clear, it's eliminating and ruining the sign. It is not restoring. And I have a question as to how the new store and other current Fowles painting is going to be removed? Is that gonna be scraped off or what? And by, I have some other comments. By having outside seating, I feel the need for operative windows has been obviated. Indeed, with climate change upon us, it's quite clear that customers will seek out areas that are air-conditioned. If they want to be outside, they can be out on the street. If they want to be inside with air, they can be inside with air without putting in operative windows. I have no idea why this is such a, uh, embroglio. Uh, and what are the proposed restoration and improvements to the facade? I've lived long enough to know that if a problem presents itself during the construction phase, and others have noticed this, let's say the glass breaks during the construction, that will all have to be removed forever. This could easily happen with the upper vitralite as well as the lower stuff below the windows. That material, while amazingly resilient, is of course also quite breakable. I don't see any way that, that the, uh, current applicant is being asked to prove that they will be a good steward of that. And listen, Newburyport has always been about history and historic preservation. That's the reason we went there. Don't think that just because this facade is only eighty years old that it deserves less attention and our full-throated protection so that it is restored and still pleasing residents and visitors into the next century. At the end of the day, Newburyport to these long-held tourists, myself and my wife, will never be the same if the sign is painted over. Trust me, eighty years from now, no one will be shedding tears over the Brian sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Chair Suntag, I see no other hands raised at this time.
So we will close the public comment section and bring it back to the board. Um, I'd like to ask the applicant to speak to the three very specific, clearly stated questions from, um, Stephanie Nikotic. And, uh, then we'll take it from there with other, uh, comments.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and we're happy to add these, um, comments also to the, um, to be clear on these plans, I, that some of the comments that Mr. Culture John made, um, as well as, um, Mr. Richards. So that's, that's not an issue at all. Um, and I would point the board to, um, Dr. Salwin's recommendations, um, that we will be following regarding uh, the Fowl sign as well as the treatment of, uh, the glass panels. Um, so on the center, um, center post, um, there is a section of that that is not original, um, not glass. And it's, uh, we will be following, uh, uh, Dr. Salwin's recommendation, uh, to find appropriate uh, replacement, um, glass for that. Um, the, the black panels will be cleaned in accordance with her instructions. Um, they're not going to be removed. Um, and we will, that's, that's what's happening with the ones all around the, the, uh, the windows themselves, below the windows. Um, the, uh, Dr. Salwin's, uh, recommendations also talk about, um, how the removal of uh, that lettering should take place, and that will be followed. I'm happy to have the board have a condition relative to following the professionals' advice um, with, um, regard to the, the cleaning of that sign. Um, and I don't believe at this point that we will be replacing any of the panels on the, um, on the, uh, on the, the yellow, the new store sign. Um, I will have to go back to Dr. Um, Salwin's report and just confirm that, um, as well. Um, but we will, um, I, I don't believe they will, and if there is any to be re- uh, replaced with, uh, because there are two that are not, they're not actually glass that she points out in her report. I, we will mark those accordingly on the plan so that it's, it's clear. Um, we don't have any issue with that. So, um, all of that is in conformance with, I think that answers almost all of, um, Ms. Nikotic's comments. Uh, the glass is the glass, and so that would be reversible because you would be able to take the glass out. I think Julia, uh, perhaps you could talk to, uh, the reversibility of the change of the glass.
Yes, as we talked about before, the Fowles is actually etched into the glass, um.
No, excuse me, I meant the windows, I meant the windows themselves, right? The windows, the reversibility of the windows.
Oh, yes, so, um, reversibility, so if you're talking about being able to put the fixed, um, storefront windows back in, that would, um, easily be reversed. These are sliding windows that just have a track that they go into that will be up, um, in the top and the bottom. And, uh, you just be removing that and putting in fixed windows back to the original.
I think that answers those questions, Madam Chair, unless you have others.
I would like Julia to speak, um, to the issue she started to talk about, to reinforce this for everybody's information. Uh, the issue around the etched letters, um, in, in the banner, um, and the brine being painted in that, that space.
Yes, so, um, with, with the glass, this is a reversible process, and as Lisa talked about, um, it's kind of, uh, laid out for us how we need to do this. And, um, so the Fowles will always be etched, that will not be touched. So brine will be painted over the top of that, and that paint will be removable. So if Brian is not there in the future, um, you know, the inset Fowles remains, and the brine would be removable. So they could remove that, and if you wanted to paint back in the Fowles letters, that would be possible.
And I'm, I'm just gonna quote from Dr. S- I just pulled out Dr. Salwin's report, so I'll just quote from her report on page two, paragraph two, first sentence. At Fowles, the lettering above the storefront accented by the applications of now aging paint was incised into the glass. Most of the cream-colored glass, although dirty, is in good condition. Standard glass cleaner mild soap and water or ammonia and water can be used to clean the glass. A small piece of cream-colored glass at the right end of the storefront is cracked. This should be retained and cracks filled with color-matched sealant, and then she goes on to details about how that will happen.
Good, thank you. Uh, while we're talking about the brine painting, could one or the other of you speak to the issue of having um, a professional typographer look at the design of that, um, wording, that, uh, lettering?
So I'm gonna have Julia speak to this, but I will tell you that you saw the studies that the, um, architectural firm uh, spent a significant amount of time with, um, with experts, um, determining this. So Julia, I don't know if you want to speak to that or not.
Yes, we did have an expert typographer go through this. She did a lot of work and research to come up with this um, and these options, and as, uh, that slide details about the sizes and the actual type of font. She, she is a, a known professional typographer, so we did do that, and it was a good amount of research and work.
Okay, thank you. Um, planning board members, any further questions or comments? Don?
Yes, thank you. Um, i- if, um, if possible, I'd appreciate it if, uh, Glenn Richards could speak to his advisory report that he produced, and specifically there was in the key findings, the third bullet, there were three sub-bullets, uh, which he said information should be provided, and I would find it useful if he would, uh, provide his opinion if he feels that those three key findings, the third, the three sub-bullets and third bullet, uh, have been met or have been supplied by the applicant. I'm trying to put Glenn on the spot, but it would be helpful to me.
Uh, Glenn, if you'd like to unmute, you're welcome to address the board. It's possible that Glenn stepped away. Glenn, are you with us? Uh, you're still muted, from what we can tell. Glenn may have stepped away for a moment.
Okay. Perhaps, um, we could ask the historic commission to just give us a quick memo, you know, sent to Andy, you know, it's, again, I don't want to repeat what's in the advisory report in November, but the third bullet does seem to say it would, would benefit from more complete information from the applicant, including, and then there's three sub-bullets, and it would seem to me, um, and probably the one that is, is perhaps the most, uh, binary is the one, and a detailed existing conditions report, existing condition report is in quotes of the storefront. I don't think we have that. I'm not saying we need it, but nonetheless, that was something that was recommended by the store commission. All right, thank you.
Well, I think we should decide if we need it or not. I wouldn't just ask for it because they wanted it. Um, this is for historic, this is for historic purposes, and I think the photographs certainly, um, uh, create a, a visual record.
We also provide you Dr. Salwin's report, which is quite detailed.
I'm not, well, maybe we saw it, and I didn't look at it, but, um, we'll look at that to see that it covers everything that we need to know. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm falling down on the job here. Bob?
Uh, thanks. Just, uh, a cou- couple of points. Uh, I think, given, given some of the comments, uh, from the presentation, I think it's really important to understand the details of, of this window system. Um, I'm concerned to hear that there are storm window panels that, that we have not seen any information on uh, that, that I would think you will see from the outside, uh, when they're in place. Uh, I don't understand completely how the tracks, top and bottom relate to existing conditions and existing materials, or whether they further reduce the, the, the vertical dimension of the, of the opening. So I, I think there's a lot more information that needs to be provided there. The, I just don't feel like we have a complete picture of that system. Uh, the other question I have is relative to the Brian signage. Does anything happen to the, the existing sign, Brian's, uh, blade sign that's mounted on the brick wall above the storefront?
Uh, the, i- if I could, just for clarification, uh, are you speaking of the brine sign that's the blade sign? Or the Fowles blade sign?
The brine, the brine sign.
No, that will stay there.
That will stay. So you have that sign as well as Brian on the, the historic storefront.
That's right, just like there's the Fowles blade sign as well as the, uh, banner.
Understand, understand. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Chair Suntag, I just wanted to note, it looks like Glenn Richards may be with us, uh, refer to you.
Great, let's hear from him if he heard the question.
Yeah, thanks. Can you hear me now?
Uh, it's hard, uh, you're, you're breaking up.
Oh, how's, how's this better? Yeah, I was, I switched to my phone and, and it, that's a long story, but anyway, sorry about that. I did hear the question. I just couldn't unmute myself fast enough. Very quickly, the three sub-bullets, uh, the one was accurate renderings, blah, blah, blah. Uh, there, well, the accuracy is, as I commented in my public remarks, is still somewhat to be desired in terms of, um, co- correctly calling out what the materials are. There are some panels, by the way, that are not structural glass, because, just like in the, uh, off-white there, uh, Fowl sign, there's a couple that are not, uh, structural glass, and the black, there's some panels that are all, that have been replaced. And that column in the middle is also not so, but anything, it, it should all be spelled out exactly what's there and what, what it's gonna be once, uh, they're all done. Um, that's kind of, uh, relates to the third bullet about the existing conditions report, uh, that which also, you know, there wasn't much detail there on, you know, exactly, um, excuse me, if there was something, if repairs were gonna have to be made to that, uh, aluminum stretch where the awning, you know, used to be attached, you know, there's some, you know, bolt holes and things like that where the old awning was and that kind of thing. Um, so, and, and, you know, on the typeface, yeah, I kind of agree somewhat with, uh, Mr., uh, Reg Bacon's, uh, comments, and, uh, like I can think of, at least for the B, you could have, uh, emulated the design of, uh, like the O, you know, and have this, or the, or the R, you know, how the, the loop of the R is filled in, could have done that with the B too. You know, little things like that. Anyway, I have mixed feelings about changing that. I think the gentleman from, from Pittsburgh spoke very eloquently to why that, it couldn't, shouldn't necessarily be changed. Anyway, I don't wanna go on and on. That was, I hope that answered the question.
Thank you. Um, Bob, your hand is still up. Is it meant to be? Now, Rick.
Yeah, I have a detailed question for Julia, I think. Um, so it's been mentioned several times that this is going to reduce the window size by eight inches, four inches on top and four inches on bottom. But I'm looking at Dr. Salwin's report on page three, and it's got a diagram of the Pitco glazing, uh, system and a photograph of the existing glass. It seems to me there might be, um, some dimension already that is uh, in the existing glass, so, you know, the Pitco glazing detail looks like it's somewhere between an inch and a half and, and two inches tall. I'm just wondering whether the change is not as dramatic as, as actually eight inches for, for on top and for on bottom. Whether there's a kind of an incremental increase, and maybe, uh, Julia could speak to that.
Yes, you're correct. It's not, um, gonna be eight inches lost. Part of those four inches on the top will be, um, tucked in under the existing frame, so the total ends up being, uh, about six inches that it will be different instead of eight.
Well, i- if I could though, um, and I think Rick, well, I, I was actually just texting with Julia about this as well. Um, we do need to take into consideration the, the size of the existing frame, so we're gonna get you that differential um, so that there's an exact number that you have.
Yes, I think the shop drawings will, uh, clear up a lot of these, uh, questions.
Thank you, that'd be very helpful.
In fact, I think we should have those shop drawings available for the next, uh, review. Not just sitting, um, in the planning office next to the, um, uh, sample. Because we're gonna have to look at that in more detail, as well as answer all these questions.
But we would, um, Madam Chair, we will, we will provide that as part of our, uh, next submittal, in addition to more detail as requested, um, on these plans.
That'd be great. So, um, I think, have we got everything covered? Whoops, I see, Beth, go for it.
Up. Um, I just wanted to ask if you've considered any different metals, um, or different materials. I know we've talked about the top being aluminum, um, the existing top. I don't know whether you've looked at, um, whether aluminum is the material that these could be made with. Um, I also just was curious as to the different widths on each side of the doorway. Um, the four windows on the right side are much wider, um, than the eight on the left side. I'm just wondering why, um, you chose to use the much narrower, narrower windows on the left side.
Uh, the angle of the wall on the left side, uh, precludes you from having longer panels because it would hit the wall um, compared to the right side. And they're also kind of matching up with the panels, um, above, so that the ones on the right are, are wider, like the panels above, and the ones on the left are a little narrower um, with the panels above.
And then I did just wonder the, um.
Yeah, and we can, we can, uh, review with the manufacturer, see what options they have for other materials.
Okay. Um, and I did wonder, I, it wasn't clear to me from any of the reports whether the other, um, the news store and the soda shop were also etched in, or if it was just the Fowles that was etched.
Only the Fowles is etched, and half of the new store are the new panels. You can see the E W, the T O, and the R E are all replaced panels.
Okay, and was the plan to replace those with material that was more similar?
Um.
No, I don't, I don't believe so. Those would be staying the same. I don't know that, um, yeah, they're gonna be staying the same. There is a, a cracked glass. a cracked glass panel that we are gonna repair at the Dr. Salwin's recommendation, but not-
Okay.
Right, those will just be cleaned.
Okay, thank you.
Great, okay. So the, the design, the applicant knows what needs to be produced for the next meeting, correct? Do you need any more clarification or direction from us?
No, I don't believe so, Madam Chair.
Good, all right. So I'm sorry to say that our agenda for our next meeting in two weeks' time is fully booked, and I'm gonna have to ask you to come back on our second meeting in February, which is February 16th. And as you can see, coming on so late tonight, you can appreciate it might be better if you went to that meeting, and Andy, if it's possible to put Brian on first that night, I think-
Will do.
Good idea. It's open to, depends on what's on between now and then, but right now, you're the only ones on the agenda. And foreseeably, you could be the first ones on, so we'll try to do that for you.
Thank you.
So I need a motion to continue this public hearing to February 16th.
Move, Rick.
Thank you.
I'll second. Alden?
Let me call Roll to confirm. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob? Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So we'll see you on February 16th. Thank you again for hanging in there and coming on so late and being so accommodating. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, you too. All right, Andy, let's move on this A and R certificate of vote. Can you get us through that?
Sure. Sure, yeah, I appreciate the board's time. The board actually reviewed this plan of approval that required plan some time ago, for those of you who've been following on the other discussions the council, the city councils had. You know about the discussion of acquiring a piece of property from the National Guard, so the larger piece of land here from the National Guard, the idea is to break that off, buy it from the Commonwealth, and use it for municipal purposes. Those uses are future needs of the property to be determined by the city, specifically the mayor and the council working together. So, long story short, this A and R plan was endorsed back in 2020, but because the council discussion of what to do with acquiring the property or not took so long, the plan itself is beyond the statutory timeframe for recording at the registry absent a statement from the planning board that nothing has changed. So what I was asking the board to do this evening is to authorize me, as you have done with where I endorsed the A and R plans after you voted to to, to authorize me to sign this certificate of vote, which basically in essence says, one, that the board already voted back in 2020 to endorse the A and R plan, two, that the, that I endorsed the A and R plan per the board's vote two days later, and that on today's date, the board voted and confirmed that there has not, pursuant to the state law, that there has not been any modification, amendment, or rescission of that plan. That would then be sent to the registry along with the A and R plan, rather than having the plan, another plan signed again, it would just, it would just be recorded at the same time as that A and R plan. So I guess I would ask for the board's approval to endorse this certificate in relation to the original A and R plan, and then that could be provided to the, for the purposes of closing, assuming that the council has decided to move ahead with the acquisition of this property at the end of the month. Chair Suntag, I'll defer to you. You're muted at present. I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
I'm sorry, I'm, I have to unmute myself. I was just trying to clarify what you wanted is a motion, approval to endorse the A and R as well as to authorize you to sign it.
If I could, if the board's motion to authorize me to sign the certificate that, that I presented tonight indicating that no change has been made or modification has been made to, to the plan, and no rescission has been done to that plan either, and I would then file the certificate. Have it stamped in the city clerk's office as well.
Okay, that's the motion I need. I need someone to make, please.
Also move Bonnie, Don.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Rick.
Okay, thank you, and I'll call Roll to formalize it. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So you can go ahead and do that, Andy. You got it.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve them as amended. There have been some minor edits provided to Linda that I know of, and if there are any others, we can take them as soon as the motion is made.
I'll make the motion.
Rick? Second?
I'll second. Alden?
Any other, any edits that haven't been sent on to Linda yet? Okay. Call Roll again for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob? Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don? Don was absent. You are abstaining, right? Yes, for Bonnie. Okay. Any updates from Andy?
No, just, I would say prepare yourselves for a discussion of short-term rental units on February 2nd.
Good, okay, so we've limited that agenda to that joint public hearing and the brine application.
Sorry, you mean the, the-
I'm sorry, Minco's, sorry. And as I said, I wasn't really, I hope it didn't come across as I was joking, but we could conceivably vote that night, but I don't want to vote until everybody's absolutely certain and happy with everything that's in the plans and the conditions, etc. We don't have to rush it. We can, they would, I'm sure, give us an extension for one more meeting just to wrap things up. So don't feel pressured just because that's the end of the time limit by which we have to make a decision. Okay, good work, everybody. Little bit of a marathon, but
Let it go on.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think we did some good work tonight, so thank you. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Alden?
No one wants to adjourn, but we can just stay here. Second?
Second, Rick.
All right, I'm sorry, but I do have to do this. Alden?
Yes.
Do you? Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay, good night, everybody.
Good night.
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 All right, thanks, Andy.
Good night, everybody. Thanks.